Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting. City Council, City of Pearland for July the 24th, year 2017. If you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by our Mayor Pro Tem Derrick Reed. And our Police Chief Johnny Spire will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You all by your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to see another day. Thank you for continuing to bless our city. Please watch over us, over the decisions that we make tonight. Please watch over the men and women that continue to protect our city and serve this country. Please watch over us as we leave this place and just please continue to be in our lives. In your son Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Do you think you want me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Texas pledge?
I am under Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I want to express our appreciation for you being here tonight. And it's great to see so many people in the audience. We had to add some chairs for some extra individuals. Thank all of you for being here as we go about the business of our city. Moving in our agenda, item number three on our collective agenda, the same agenda that you will be using. We have a roll call at all of our council members here except for Councilmember Owens. Moving to item number four, citizen comments. We have two citizens, and then the order in which they were received by me from the City Secretary, Larry Marcot. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, Larry Marcot. Is it on?
Yep.
Larry Marcot, 3606 Inverness Court, Pearland. I'm here to talk about some dead trees. On Pearland Parkway, there's a big pine tree. It's probably eighteen inches in diameter at the base, and it has been falling down. Limbs are falling off. A bark left in very short order when I first noticed it, and I've reported it, and it still stands. It's going to come down one of these days, and when it does, it's going to be on Pearland Parkway likely. And I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about liability, whether it belongs to the city right away or whether it's the owner. It needs to be taken care of, and I've tried discussing it with Parks and heard to hear a comment or an acknowledgement back from the public works, but nothing's happened, and it's gotten worse. It needs to be taken care of. In addition to that, there's another one across from the VFW on that tree lot, the corner of a subdivision there. Coming down through there the other day, there was a limb that was kind of out into the street that's fallen off. There's a lot of trees, including my own at home, that have some dead limbs in them from the weather situation we've had, and they need to be taken care of before somebody gets hurt, and it just needs to be taken care of. And the city is the best source to get a hold of to get something done. One other thing I'm still concerned about, comments I've made previously about Dixie Farm and the intersection with 518, and the fact that if you're on Dixie Farm headed towards 45, you get about five cars, maybe seven cars if you're lucky, to get through that intersection, and people are running to stop, running the lights just to get through because they've been backed up for a couple of lights. Something needs to be done, and one of the things that need to be done is widening some streets. I know that's a very difficult thing to do, but it needs to be looked at and to see what can be done because people are getting upset because it's taken so long to get through those intersections. I think there may be others in the city. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you so much. Steve Bell, I saw him come in. There he is. Thank you for being here tonight.
Steve Bell, 1302 East Broadway. That's my old hometown, Pearland, sorry. I'm here to give you a state of scouting message, some good news, very definitely. Just a quick self-introduction. I've been the district executive for the Bay Area Council for about a year now, and I have eight years' experience as a scouting professional. Other than Mayor Reed, are there any other Eagle Scouts in the room? Show of hands, Eagle Scouts? There's one way back there. Just curious. Only about 4% of the boys that join the Boy Scouts of America become an Eagle Scout, but here in Pearland, it's eight. Eight percent, twice as many. We're very proud of that fact. Our units are very strong. We serve 1,456 Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Ventures, and Sea Scouts when we combine the Scouts over in Friendswood. This is known as the Northern Star District. We also supply at no charge a learning-for-life curriculum to the Pearland ISD, and that's taught to 177 elementary and special need students. We've recently organized a Pearland Police Explorer Post under the direction of Officer Raiden Cohen. They're going to a statewide competition for competency tournament in the next couple of weeks. As I mentioned, meeting Mayor Reed. He's an active member and always at the Eagle Scout Court of Honors, and the boys get their Eagles. We're always very glad to see him there and also hear from him. Recently, we honored a longtime scouter and Pearland ISD board member, Virgil Gant, posthumously at a breakfast on April 18th at the Country Club with the Golden Eagle Award. We held a Cub Scout Day Camp over a week, the last week in June, at Cresta Dare Park, just north of us here, on Cullen Parkway, and we served over 200 youth, the largest in the council, very successful. We continue to hold week-long, week and weekend camping events at Camp Karankaawah down near Sweeney. A lot of people know the camp down there. We continue to maintain that. Bay Area Council is based in Galveston. We're not affiliated with the San Houston Council up north, except that we're all part of the Boy Scouts of America, but we do pay our own bills and run our own organization and program. Just real quickly, some other great news. Within just the 142 hours are averaged in every Eagle Scout project. Recently, there were 994 hours given to churches, 1,562 hours to nonprofit organizations, and 142 to local schools, amounting to a total of 4,108 just in Eagle Scout projects alone. That doesn't include any of the other projects that the younger boys do. We're looking forward to another successful recruiting campaign and a popcorn sale as school starts. On April 26th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Fellowship Bible Church, we're going to hold an East Side recruitment drive. And on September 2nd, from 2:00 to 6:00, Pearland West Library will be hosting the other half of the city. If anyone knows of an organization that would like to sponsor a scouting unit, please contact me. Our special needs are over here on the west side, yet east of 288, because as you all know, the other side of the freeway is Alvin School District, and that's how we work it out. So, thank you very much. If there's any questions at all, I'd be glad to field a question or two.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate your comments. And I'd like to report that scouting is alive and well in Pearland, and we have some wonderful troops, including one from the Police Department here. Moving in our agenda, item five on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I don't hear any.
I'd like to remove item.
Item E. We're going to remove item E as an easy. Any other item? Hearing none. Items A through M with the exception of E. Let's count to member Carbone if he would present this for our consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of consent, agenda items A through M excluding E, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor and a discussion with council. Hearing none, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion carried six to zero with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving to item number E, Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance 2000M-160, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the second and final reading, as was noted, for rezoning. It is in conformance with the future land use plan, and just ask for your consideration.
Council, have any question or comment?
If you have one.
I know it was a long discussion. I don't think I was here in chambers when we actually voted on it, but I do remember during the JPH, there was a lot of discussion on entrance and just roadway access, and I just wasn't sure if that was cleared up. I see that PMZ approved the project, but I had questions, and I didn't know if the developer was actually here or the applicant was actually here.
Member Reed, if I, while they're coming up, if they're here, just, there was quite a discussion. They had a possible site plan that's attached. I think that generated a lot of those questions. But as we've tried to note, this is the rezoning, and we've taken note of all the site issues and infrastructure, and it'll be taken that up if and when there's an actual development that would go with that, so.
Okay.
But the developer is here, I think, if you wanted to hear from him too.
Is that the applicant? Please come up. Thank you for being here.
Sir, my name's Jeff Freeman with LJ Engineering. We have submitted a site plan, just as kind of a rough ballpark of what the development might look like. We are working with city staff to make sure that it complies with all the city ordinances as far as water sewer drainage, access, emergency access, those things, but really, we are just talking about the zoning of the property.
And I understand, and that was made known during the initial JPH, and it was brought up several times. This is not a PD, it's not a CUP, it's not for a specific project, and so, but the residents' concerns are really what, you know, just kind of raised the questions that I had and other council members had on that day. And then, like I said, I wasn't here for the first reading, and so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, and like you said, you're going to work with staff to make sure that everything is okay as far as conforming to our standards, so that's all I really had.
Good. Thank you so much. Any further question or comment? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Ordinance number 2000M-160 passed on second and final reading, the vote of six to zero with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to new business, which is item number six. New business item number one, Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I don't think there's necessarily a resolution or anything to introduce on this one, so.
Yeah, it's just the staff.
Yeah. So, if I could, this is, the city is a recipient of federal community development block grant funds. We've started that process at the last meeting, laying that out, and Joel Hardy from staff leads that effort, and I ask him to give a little outline of what we're doing here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, Mayor and Council. This is our 11th annual action plan that will describe our intended use and recommendations for spending for the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2018. And as the agenda request shows, we've got several projects that we are recommending we spend next year's money on. We will continue to, as we discussed in the public hearing and the last meeting, fund existing social service agencies. Right now, we began the year with four under contract. Two of those have essentially survived the fiscal year. One indicated that they would self-deobligate because of a lack of interest in the local area for the program they had designed, and the other just has not been able to present an eligible scope of work with regard to some of the requests that they've made for reimbursement, which is not uncommon. But the two agencies that seem to be progressing forward, one we've worked with for many years, Pearland Neighborhood Center, will continue to provide emergency assistance to the community where needs for rental assistance and utility and prescription assistance, if necessary, whether elderly or concerned, and the counseling services being provided by Counseling Connections is a program that's operating very well in addition. So, we'll continue those two programs. We are also proposing some local infrastructure improvements in the community. We have the NAP Center HVAC replacement that we're proposing. We use CDBG funds. The CDBG program actually at the onset of its beginnings, built the NAP Center, so we did, we do have some history there as far as the use of CDBG money, and this is a timely request because I believe that the existing system may have some burdens on it right now that require it be replaced pretty soon. If its replacement is more urgent than our ability to allocate next year's funding for, we can reprogram money from this current available balance to get that need met immediately. The code enforcement and housing rehab programs we're proposing to continue, and those two programs are working very well. We are continuing to rehabilitate and repair dilapidated structures and things that our local homeowners that are of low, moderate income and need repairs that they can't afford to perform themselves, we're chiming in with the ability to provide some funding for support, some of their needs there. And we will have some money left over that we would really like to see go to some local infrastructure where a street and drainage project is concerned, and we have some ideas about areas of eligibility that can be served with those funds. And the final piece of the program would be to budget for our traditional program administration at the 20% cap that HUD allows us to spend CDBG funds on. So, we've got a pretty simple proposed use of funds for next year, and we will also be attaching our five-year consolidated plan to our presentation for council to adopt these at the next regular meeting, and that will also include our fair housing assessment of the community and what we need to have in place as far as removing any impediments to fair housing over the course of the next five years. So, with that, that ends my presentation. I'll pass the balance back to council for input and discussion.
Charlie, I think staff did a excellent job in reaching out to our community and selecting some much-needed support, help in selected areas that you chose. I think it's a good, did a good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did a good job. Any further comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to have at least some idea of what y'all are planning for the street and drainage. Have y'all identified those projects yet?
We have not fully identified those projects, but I think one of our recommendations as we perfect the last few elements of the plan before we present to council at the next meeting would be to attach this to some of the survey result activities that come out of the Mimosa Acres area, the area that we are doing some work to do some flood mitigation in now, and Mr. Upton can speak to what's going on in that project, but we may be able to add to some of those resources to complete that work.
What's the threshold for a neighborhood or an area to be allowed to be in the CDBG grant money allocation as opposed to areas that are not?
Sure, so we're talking about area benefit activities, and for a traditional entitlement jurisdiction, it's 50% or more. But because Pearland has a relatively low poverty rate, HUD has offered us a lower or reduced percentage in that regard, and we would be set at 40.93%. So, we have what's called an exception to that rule, and that would be that our block groups in those areas would have to be considered 40.93% or more low to moderate income, and that would be based on census income data.
What's the household income for low to moderate?
The household income, it changes every year, and it's based on 80% of the metropolitan statistical area income for Brazoria County, and those income limits come out on an annual basis. So, I do have access to that information. I don't have it readily up on my screen, but I can pull it up and get that information to council. Our metropolitan statistical area income is somewhere between 80 and 85,000, so for a family of four, that probably puts them about $60,000, $62,000.
The reason I ask, and you and I've had this conversation in the past, there are areas of town that not necessarily are low to moderate income, but they have components of it that are low to moderate, and particularly multifamily. So, there is areas of Shadow Creek where there's apartments, and there is a need for some infrastructure improvements and therefore the safety of the kids, but that area doesn't qualify. Is there any, are there any exceptions to that?
There are some exceptions to those rules, and that would get us into what's called spot slum and blight mitigation or remediation. And the rule is basically that you'd have to have a street, for example, lined with about 25 properties that would be dilapidated or in a slummed or blighted condition, and we just don't have those kinds of situations in Pearland. It is very difficult to use funds outside of the target area, and the way that many cities typically go about doing that is to conduct a survey, an income survey of that area, which is a possibility, but it's an arduous process, and it ones that 100% of the residents in an area to be considered for improvement would have to participate in that survey, and it does take a long time for HUD to approve those.
Since CDBG won't be able to use for it, at least let me request if we can find grant money or some assistance for this. The sidewalk on the west side of Business Center where there's the apartments that are lined up, those kids walk in the street to school. A lot of them walk to school. They walk along the curb line. The slope's too steep. There's nowhere for them to walk safely. At least, I've witnessed a couple of near misses, and they're kids, and they're not paying attention, so. If this doesn't qualify after that, because I know most of them are probably low to moderate income households, but they're not in a low to moderate income area. If there's any possibility through another funding mechanism to find some way to target that area, you know, if we can find something, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, and we have done somewhat of a survey with the community surrounding the traffic signal that we installed on Garden FM 518, and that was successful, but it did take us a long time to get HUD's approval for that, and we were dealing with one single multifamily community, but we can certainly note that and make an ardent effort to go forward with some research.
Yeah, I just wouldn't wait, I don't want to wait till one of those kids actually gets clipped before.
Certainly, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other council comment or questions on these selected items? I think it was a good choice of selection, and council has no further question, then have a motion and a second to approve?
It's just input and discussion.
We just going to put on that?
Yes.
Moving to new business item number two, Councilmember Reed, would you present this?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1541, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor.
Thank you, sir. This is an in-city mud, creation of a new mud, first reading that would be involved with the Massey Oaks development. This does have the 10 cent reimbursement that the city will be given back out of its property tax levy, and does somewhat differently than others, I understand, have road powers for the mud going forward, but it is integral to the development, and it's presented for your consideration here.
And if I could just add as a follow-up to that, as indicated in your agenda, there's an ordinance to consent to this. This is another step in that process of the Massey Oaks development. Earlier this evening, you had the second reading of the annexation. At a council meeting several months ago, we actually had the adoption of the development agreement for this development, so this is the third action. There will be a fourth action on the agenda tonight associated with this development. But something I did want to emphasize, right now, the ordinance before you references the 212 acres for the Massey development, and Massey Oaks part of the development. There's also another tract, the Rogers Tract, that will be included in this mud. That exhibit is not attached to the resolution here, so when it comes to you for your second reading, it will include the 212 acres for the Massey property in addition to the 158 acres for the Rogers Tract as well. I just wanted to make sure the council is aware of that. The Rogers Tract is already in the city limits, and that's why there was an inadvertent mix-up, and it did not get included on the resolution. That will be on there for the second reading. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay. Council have any question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I do. Can you explain exactly what powers would be granted under this mud?
This mud will have its, the traditional powers that you associate with the mud district, and that will be, of course, to build the traditional water, sewer, and drainage improvements that the other mud districts in the city have. It will also have the park powers that go along with muds. There are limitations on park powers, and there has to be a certain amount of development, and then they can only issue debt that would be equivalent to 1% of the value of the mud district at that point when they do issue those bonds for park improvements. And then the other improvements that they would be able to do under this agreement would be, they would have road powers to build roads as well.
Okay. And I like the wording that we will require that they have all the mud board meetings in Pearland.
Yes, sir.
Any further comment or question for council?
Yes, Mayor. Kind of continuing on with a conversation we had about Mud 28. Is there any way or any ability for us to put it a provision in the mud creation that any annexation must be contiguous?
The, that's sort of at the discretion of the council in this particular instance. We don't have that. What it does require is that any annexations would be subject to council approval, so you ultimately have the final decision on that. That was something we discussed with the attorneys and the developers at the time, and they did not want that limitation.
For this particular development or for the mud attorneys in general?
Specifically, the mud attorneys that were representing this particular development.
Is the, are the developers here? Could I ask particularly what's the objection for future annexation into this mud being required to be contiguous with this development?
I wasn't involved in the discussions between the attorneys, but I can just tell you as a general rule, you know, with the in-city muds, especially the way Pearland has them set up, where the city owns and operates all the utilities, and the mud really is just a financing vehicle, you know, the contiguous nature of a mud, like if it was in an ETJ mud where the mud was operating all the facilities, doesn't, you don't have those same constraints, so that's the general rule.
I can speak a little bit to why in this particular instance that they took the position they did. As you know, there's a lot of vacant property adjacent to the Massey Tract and the Rogers Tract out there that they hope to ultimately include in this mud district, and it could be possible that they don't get, the initial part that they buy may not be immediately adjacent to the property, but it could be the next tract over, and so it wouldn't be contiguous to it, and so they wanted to still have that ability to purchase property, annex it into the mud, and still have it developed. That was sort of the rationale at the time.
I think we could even give, my personal opinion is we could give some leverage and say, maybe if it's not contiguous within a certain maybe if it's not contiguous within a certain, certain distance of the perimeter of the mud. I'm just, I'm just concerned with having two, we already have enough muds that are disjointed. You know, I don't think I want to add to that inventory personally. I'm fine with the creation of the mud. I just would, personally, I'd like to see that there be a provision that this mud be self-contained instead of having another speckled mud that's all over the place. We just deal with the ones that we already have. Not sure if I'm alone on that.
And just to read from the consent conditions, right now, the way it reads is that no additional land may be annexed into the district unless the city council adopts a resolution granting its consent to the annexation. That's, it clearly gives the council the discretion and authority to whether or not you would want to, if you felt like one was close enough in proximity, would give you that discretion to annex it. If you felt like it was too far and beyond what would be considered to be the, sort of the scope of this type of development, then obviously you would have the discretion not to approve it as well.
Mayor, if I can chime in, I understand Councilman Perez's comments, but when it comes back before us to consent to an additional property or land being brought into this mud, I don't have an issue, issue with the way it's written that just comes back to council before any other land can be added. Specifically, I think this one's going to get, with the street powers as Darren mentioned, I mean, I think there's going to be some heightened scrutiny on to what's added here. So I'm fine with it just as it's written.
I just personally have concern with the additional powers that are in this mud that are not, and those powers were only recently added by the legislature to, much to be able to take on those powers, that this mud will become a hotbed for new developers and that the people who live here will have mud debt that won't expire. Because, I mean, if I was developing here and I had too much to choose from, I'd choose the ones that maximize, maximize the amount of reimbursement. You know, as a developer agent, I'm, you know, I'm kind of torn because I'd like to see development happen, but, you know, I don't know if, I'm on the fence in that I don't know if this is a provision we need to do. I feel like I'm kind of alone on this, but I'd like to, at least to have a discussion, at least have it openly discussed that that's something that I'm concerned about. So at least in the future, this won't happen and, I mean, y'all be off council both of the time you're done developing this. But just at least something for us to consider as we continue to annex or allow muds to annex areas. I think this one will be, once developed, I think everybody's going to jump into it. I'd like to see a protection against the people who, who live here to have more opportunity to say. But again, if I'm alone, I'll just, I'll let it be.
Well, you know, I'll chime in and say what I've said from the beginning. I'm going to be voting against it. The road powers is a big issue for me and my assumption, I haven't talked to the developer, but my assumption is part of the reason they're asking for road powers is the infrastructure they're putting in to make the development possible, which is one problem I have had with the development from the beginning. I don't think the property's ready to be developed. I think the only way it makes financial sense is with road powers, which honestly, looking at what the legislature's doing right now and we look at property caps, they're pretty much exempting muds with the bill I read that's going to go to the House. Yet, we have mud districts with tax rates as high, if not higher, than the city tax rate. Yet, we get yelled at every time we do something with taxes. So to me, we're just adding on to that problem when we start allowing road and park powers on top of water.
I appreciate the concern. I think the quality development's going to hap, the only way we get the quality development with the price of land out here is going to be with the reimbursement component. And the more they can be reimbursed, my expectation is the more they'll invest in the land. That provision doesn't bother me and it'll definitely be a yes to the creation of the mud. I think it's two different conversations. I think I'll be fine. If I'm the only one that's worried about the not, a discontiguous, potential discontiguous nature of this mud and not having a provision to prevent that from happening, then I'm fine with it.
Another question or comment? Thank you. Appreciate it. We do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Orno?
No.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Ordinance fifteen forty-one is approved five to one with Councilmember Owens asking for the chambers on its first reading.
Moving to business item number three, Councilmember Orno, you do the honor.
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number fourteen ninety-seven dash four. Still moved?
Second.
We do have motion second on the floor. Staff report at this point.
This, this is another planning and zoning item. I'm sorry, number four.
Three.
Three, I'm sorry, yeah. This is the school zones. Staff's been working with the two major school districts within the city, Pearland ISD and Alvin ISD. Engineers have met with them and gone over the different routes, recognized some of the road improvements and the additional schools. Mr. Upton's been the point person on that and ask him to go over that for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To continue what Mr. Pearson had stated is that we've been working with both, both school districts with regards to getting our time zones and our school zones all uniform and that's utilizing both the Texas Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices and also the Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute, which sets forth some, sets forth criteria that we can use for evaluating the existing length, type, location of signage, use of flashers, enforcement time for each school zone. So we looked at all that criteria. This is something we try to do every year, depending on if school changes their times significantly. But this year, we took a look overall to take a look and try and comply with some of those standards, taking a look at thirty minutes of time in the school zone before the bell rings in the morning and then closing the school zone down at fifteen minutes after that first bell. And then the afternoon is starting that time zone fifteen minutes before the bell rings when school gets out and carrying it to thirty minutes after the school bell rings for the end of the day. So we looked at that and then we also looked at the length of the school zones. So then we developed those maps that you have included in your package, went out there and GPSed all those locations in so we can keep an inventory of there, of that. We met with each of the school districts, both with the, with the direct, with the school superintendent and also the safety director for Alvin ISD and presented these. They had no comments or changes. They accepted those recommendations. So we can shorten some of those school zones that are pretty long. Studies have shown if they're very long, then school and speeders, I should say, not speeders, but travelers through the school zones will start to speed and increase their speed. So we took it to the standard, which is usually either two-hundred feet before the driveway entrance or two-hundred feet before the property. And we chose the property to make it just a little bit longer, but then worked with the school districts accordingly to any of those special areas that had some other criteria with them. So those are your maps. Those are everything that's dictated and once adopted, then we'll make changes and get preparation for the school year coming up in August.
You know, looking at the map that you have provided for the traffic decisions were made, how many intersections, how many streets are we talking about here? That was a fabulous job you did.
Well, I have my staff to thank for that. They took that on with great zeal and went out there and visited all the intersections and took a look, some of them more complex than others. The one around Old Alvin where the junior high is located and that was one of our more complex areas. But we wanted to get that in because then we also took this data and it's now located in our interactive map. If you take a look on our website, we are now incorporating this information so that residents and our citizens can also take a look and see where school zones are located within the city.
When you think about all the schools we have and the fact that you have to start, start, start your attention before you get to the school intersection and you're going to do it twice, one for the morning and one for the kids to go to school and one in the afternoon, that's a tremendous amount of work you had to put in there on that. And I commend you for that. That's, is that your, what committee did that? Did you have a name of the committee that mostly worked on that with the police department?
Nope, I had, just my engineering staff took that on and did what was necessary to get that squared away.
Okay, good, good. Okay, councilor, any question or comment on this item? I think it's an impressive, impressive study.
Couple of small ones. I feel silly, should I probably should know this. The school zones that are located intersecting with Dixie Farm Road up by the regional airport. Can you remind me what schools in that area?
Rustic Oaks. Rustic Oaks is right on the corner of the city limits.
And the other question was, I know we've had, well, not with you, but with the engineering department, there's been discussion about the, for lack of a better term, the legitimacy and the benefit of the school zones along Broadway. You know, it's being a major corridor. Schools aren't directly located right next to it. Alexander is, but I don't know how many, or at least with the one over at Old Alvin, how many, how many students we actually have walking around across Broadway. Have we, have we just witnessed that there's a lot of, a lot of kids walking across Broadway, getting to school? Is there?
I'm turning to that map right now, so.
Do you have a question or comment?
One, one second.
One second. We do have, I mean, that's a tradition because of the property that fronts Broadway and so that's, that's where that's set up from. Have I witnessed and counted how many pedestrians? We've not done that.
I know for Alexander, I mean, I'm going to advocate for safety. It just, it's, every time I drive through there, it seems less and less safe because it's a four-lane highway and people just ignore it.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why we try to shorten some of these and remove areas that are not pertinent anymore. And so that causes that time for evaluation. So we can look at that as we go along every year.
Well, thank you for all your work. I'm sorry to.
No, you're fine. Thank you, Councilman.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have the same question as Councilman Perez about Jamison doesn't front, doesn't front Broadway. Neither does, I think the school's on, well, so the school's on for Jamison is thirty-five feet to the, to the east on Broadway from Woody? Were y'all able to observe, I guess, how many students or the number of students that are crossing in? I'm assuming this observation took place in like April or March, right?
We took a lot of our observations in terms of that would be previous, yes. But with regards to what we did today and what we did here is to take a look at existing school zones as they stand, as they are, and any that are out of conformance, we took a look that way to bring them back into a two-hundred-foot distance from the property line. We did not dive into how many students crossed each. That would have to be done during the school year physically.
Yeah, well, and I guess that's what I'm getting to. I mean, we, every summer since I've been on council, so three summers, we've, we've always done this during the summertime, which seems kind of redundant because we're not looking at real-time school and real students are actually crossing the street, especially streets like Broadway, you know, all the way down Broadway, not just, you know, Old Alvin where just where Councilman Perez mentioned, but, you know, at Woody where Jamison is. There's apartment complexes on the other side of the road. Obviously, on the, on the other side of the street, we have Brothers that's going to open up. And so, you know, there's, there's the students that are going to be crossing from, and the only students that are zoned to Brothers specifically are, or ninety percent are from Southern Trail. So they're crossing the street to go to the school. You know, I know a lot of emphasis wasn't put on the school zone for Shadow Creek High School by staff specifically, but, you know, that two-hundred feet, or the, I guess what I'm asking for is, can we do this again or can we go back again and review this, you know, maybe September, October timeframe to really see stats and, and make a better determination of whether or not school zones need to be extended, not shortened, but extended, specifically school zones that are on Broadway and where we have students that are possibly crossing the street. I think Brothers would be the, the only school where you have an entire neighborhood that's zoned across the street from a major road besides Pearland High School. What's the other one?
Rogers. Everything there is, I mean, if you look at Pearland, everything skewed very far east for the schools. I mean, it happens. So, but I'm going to abstain from this.
I know, I know Jamison's got a, it's got a crosswalker at the intersection and it's right across my office. So they get a lot of foot traffic across there. I think that one's definitely necessary. I don't.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not saying it's not necessary. I'm saying maybe even extended, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think there is, there's a call for that to actually get a traffic study in the area for pedestrians. You'd have to physically have somebody out there and count at peak hours. So it wouldn't be cheap. It's worth, whether, I mean, we would be talking about, you know, whether that measurement equates to an extension or whether we want to just say, save the money and say, look, let's just be on the safe side and extend it another however many feet. The thing with the MUTCD is that it really doesn't have a whole lot of provisions in it that are for, in my opinion, engineering. It just, hey, you could do this and it'd be great. But it doesn't, it doesn't document anything other than, you know, engineering judgment. So there wouldn't even be anything for us to account, to equate the count to, to say, in this count, we have this many people, therefore that justifies a, a school zone of this length. At least nothing that I've ever seen when I was putting together these. So I don't know if, I think, I don't think we would benefit from an investment in actual physically counting the pedestrians. But if we want to take, take a deeper look, maybe observe a couple of school days, random school days and say, you know, we think that this school zone is, is okay. We think this school zone is, could you, could benefit from lengthening or shortening. I think witnessing that during the school year would probably be of benefit.
Why don't we just talk to the principal? Talk to the school district. I mean, they're, they're the ones that have the, that are bringing the kids over.
Councilman, that's why we met with the school districts themselves and let them choose. We had some that were longer. You'll see that seven of those, seven of the, of the school zones that we have have been shortened. We proposed those based off of TMUTCD and also the TTI studies. However, we left it in hands with the district to say, do you agree with this or not? Having their start time person there, having their transportation coordinator there, their traffic safety person there. Each of them looked at each of the school districts that we proposed and said, we're fine with each one. And then those that we wanted to shorten, you know, was asking for historical knowledge. Why did we have it this long? What was the purpose of it? Each of them came back and said, well, it was done because someone was debating or a concerned parent at that time, many years ago, which is no longer present, had that done and requested that half-mile, mile-long school zone because they wanted to include certain intersections in that sub-development. Taking a look back now, they've agreed to reevaluate and take a look at that to what we recommended. And that's a long-winded answer to your questions.
That being said, I think y'all have done a great job. I don't want to touch it.
I think y'all have done a great job too, but I do want to touch it. If we go up to the, to the, the Shadow Creek High School, right? Between Shadow Creek High School and Shirley Brothers, there's what, like fifty feet that we left out instead of just making them contiguous, a run together, continuous, I'm sorry?
If you take a look, sir, there's, there, the reason why they aren't contiguous is that they are completely two different times. They are not the same time zones.
I understand that. Why not put them right next to each other so someone knows that they're still in the school zone instead of trying to speed up towards the end and then all of a sudden, oh, I'm at another school zone?
Well, the signage is in place and will be put in place as per the traffic study that was done. It's just that you have, you have a high school that'll be early in the morning and their school zone ends. It's just that you have, you have a high school that'll be very early in the morning, and their school zone ends before the elementary school starts.
What time does the high school end?
Uh, the high school, school zone ends, uh, let me pull that one up.
Seven forty AM. Seven, seven forty AM.
Seven forty AM.
So, the, so the, so the elementary starts at seven thirty, or seven, I'm sorry, seven fifteen, right? They have to be at school at eight. They do. So, it'd be at seven thirty?
Elementary, seven thirty?
They do.
It, it's seven thirty on the map.
So, they do overlap?
They do overlap. I apologize. I was.
So, so again, so, I mean, what, what is it that we have against putting the signs right next to each other to where, I mean, you see them, you know what I'm saying? I mean, what, what's, what's with the fifty feet?
Well, we act, I mean, I know it looks, it's perspective on the, on the drawing. It's more than fifty feet. But it's just creating a longer school zone. We're trying to shorten them, but I understand what you're saying.
I mean, that, this was, I mean, I don't know, we argued about this or debated it or whatever. I mentioned it last year, I mean, with the, the, it seems like we shouldn't even have a school zone for Shadow Creek Ranch, right, Shadow Creek Ranch High School right there, if, if we're not going to even, I mean, it's, you know, I could, I could forty-yard dash it, right? So, it's not that long at all. And staff seemed pretty resistant to, to extending it. I don't know, at, at the end of the day, I, I think that's one, and I think the same thing with Jamison. You know, on Broadway, there's not really a whole lot of room, or we haven't allowed a lot of, of, of foot traffic for all the homes that are south of, where Councilman Perez, where his office is, south of, of Broadway.
Oregon, yeah.
And again, I'm only, I'm only commenting on, on, you know, the ones that are on Broadway or off of Broadway. And you mentioned Rogers as well. I, I, I know Broadway is a major street, and I know we don't want to slow it down too much. But I mean, schools exist, and this is a town with a lot of kids. I mean, and so, we have to take that into account. Cullen, the same way, you know, the, the school zone for Dawson. I mean, when that, when those, those townhomes that are north of, north of Hawk? Basically, at, at McCard, you know, when those townhomes come into, when those townhomes are finally developed, I mean, we'll get another school of students coming down to, to, to Dawson. And so, I mean, obviously, we'll take that into account then, but, you know, I don't know. It seems like we're so resistant, we meaning the city is so resistant to school zones and, you know, speed limits and stuff like that. And so, I'm just, just bringing it up, just commenting.
So, just a couple of things. I, I don't think that there's a resistance. I think that we, we've got guidelines that are laid out by the traffic manuals that, that, that we use in the, in the engineering department to, to guide these things. So, the Shadow Creek High School and the adjacent school, if we were to combine those, you'd basically have a school zone starting at six fifty AM, ending at eight fifteen through that whole stretch. And I think that's why we, we saw that we could have a, less of an effect on traffic through that whole corridor by separating. I think the also, also, when Shadow Creek Ranch High was originally evaluated, because the school does not front Broadway, there really wasn't a necessity to put one on Broadway. If you, if you follow, you know, the guidelines. So, but working with the school district, we did that. So, you know, we, we can look at all these things and review them and take some guidance on where to take these things. But I, I just, you know, it's not that there's a resistance to it. It's that we've got guidelines and we want consistencies, consistency across the schools.
Well, so, so a couple of things. Councilman Perez, who, who definitely used to work for the city, just said that it's not an engineering, it's not something you can engineer. I mean, obviously, you have to look at the students as well. We keep doing this during the summer, again, where there's no students. I fully understand that there's guidelines, but we're here to make decisions for, you know, the residents, right? So, I mean, we don't have to go by what some book says. You look at Houston, we're not Houston, obviously, but every street in Houston is thirty-five miles an hour, some forty miles an hour. Our streets are forty-five miles an hour, so our school zones are still, you know, high, thirty-five miles an hour. On Shadow Creek Parkway, it's, you know, thirty-five miles per hour in the school zone. And so, you know, that's cool because we don't have anybody crossing the street from crossing Shadow Creek Parkway. In this instance, I mean, we can't talk about consistency because on Magnolia, there's school zones that where the speed limit actually reduces to thirty-five miles an hour and puts the school zone at twenty miles an hour. And so, we're not consistent across the board. We're not even consistent with our speed limits. That's something I was going to bring up at the end of the meeting to have on another agenda, and I still will. But our speed limits in the city are not consistent. You can drive down Westheimer, it's thirty-five miles an hour. You can drive down Richmond, it's thirty-five miles an hour. If you drive down, you know, Leland, if you drive down Jackson, Pierce, you know, I can go on and on. It's, it's consistent, thirty-five miles an hour. School zones, twenty miles an hour. Our school zones are across the board. I mean, our speed limits in the school zones are everywhere. So, so I don't see much consistency, I don't see much consistency with the speed limits in the school zones or the speed limits on our streets. Half of Broadway, until you get to the tracks, is forty miles an hour. Soon as you cross over the tracks, it's forty-five miles an hour heading west. So, so, I mean, and, and it's all the same, you know, businesses all along until you get to, essentially, to, to Kirby. And then you start to get back to residences and whatnot. So, again, you know, going by a book or a manual, you know, that's may, may have been fine when the city was thirty-three thousand people. But now, it's, you know, it's, it's changed considerably. And I'm not saying that staff is not doing a great job. I mean, you are. I mean, it's, it's, our city looks great, and it's because of staff. I guess what I'm saying is, sometimes we have to deviate from books and, and the things that, that, that say, okay, if you have this many people, you need to do this, because our city is made up differently.
So, I think we need to give, give them guidance as to what we want to do because we need time to order signs and make the modifications, which is why it's, I, I would assume it's up for approval now as opposed to during the school year. Obviously, it's why it's up for approval now with the school, the school year. Do you want to propose any specific modifications? Do you want to make Broadway in front of Shadow Creek High School contiguous with the adjacent?
I don't, I don't think it needs to be contiguous. I just think this, well, I do think it needs to be contiguous with the signs maybe backing up to each other. Obviously, the school zone times are different, like you said. And so, high school gets out before the elementary students. And so, at least to where it shows, you know, one, one will stop flashing and the other one will, will start flashing. Or, you know, some will be, they'll be flashing at the same time, but I don't know that that gap is necessary. And, and that, you know, if it's not fifty feet, however many feet it is, it's very short. I guarantee you that. And so, you know, it, it doesn't seem logical to put that gap and have people start to speed up, considering that you will have some different drivers in the mornings, depending on which way they're trying to go or come from.
And perhaps by the time we get here next year, we, we could adopt, we could discuss and adopt a policy as to, to be presented to councils to what our priorities are in school zone signage, whether it's shortened distance for traffic concerns, whether it's extended distance for pedestrian concerns, and give you a little bit more guidance in the future.
I know, I understand. That would be great in terms of that. We can develop a policy. I know pedestrians are set up with pedestrian counts plus also level of pedestrians usage. And a lot of those are put in based on what the traffic consultants for the districts develop, based on the districts needed where they set. So, you know, a lot of those are set, well, example would be Shirley Deal Brothers. The new school will be implemented. That'll, it'll take some time to normalize to determine what that level of traffic is. But they have metrics that they use to determine what foot traffic will be.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think we could benefit from allowing for local clarification of the TMUCD. It's just.
It's there. It's still engineering judgment, as you had stated earlier, councilman.
Yeah. And it's, you know, personally, I think we could benefit from giving the engineers a little less judgment, and at least on this particular incident. So, if you want to present, Councilmember, if you want to present a future discussion about speed limits throughout the city, we can have a discussion about in the future, that and traffic policies and what's in the EDCM. And, you know, any, any guidance to staff about what we may want to modify. I'd, I'd be all on board with that. I love talking traffic.
Well, and, and obviously, the time on the agenda is at, at the end, so I'll definitely be presenting that for a discussion topic. I, I did want to bring your attention, though, to another school, CJ, CJ Harris, where it, it kind of goes into what I'm talking about. The school zone continues way past the actual school, goes all the way till you get to Berry Rose, and then opens up again. And so, wasn't sure if there was a train coming. And, and it continues on just so those folks that live across the street can, you know, can get over there. And so, you know, and it's actually pretty wide, you know, gives them, you know, some ways to get across. I mean, again, if you know that seventy-five percent of the people that are going to one school live across a major street, why not, you know, it, it's argue, it's a great argument to extend that school zone to be a little bit longer, to accommodate all of those kids. So, what you're saying is, you know, you can cross in this little section, and we'll, you know, this is where we'll protect you. If you cross on Kirby, if you cross at Half Moon Bay, I mean, you're screwed, at least before. Actually, even right now, you're screwed because, you know, your, that school zone doesn't start until seven thirty, right? And the other one ends at seven forty. So, if you cross at Half Moon Bay and you go to that high school, I mean, right now, you have a bus system that Alvin ISD has implemented, but only for two years, maybe three. After that, I mean, technically, there's, they should all be walkers. So, I mean, for us to say, you know, or to have this conversation, you know, years from now after kids have been hit, or one kid has been hit, then, oh, well, maybe we should have done this back then. I mean, why not do it now? We're worried about drivers. They moved over there knowing that, hey, there's a lot of schools. I mean, you need to accept it. And there's a lot of kids, so anyways, I'm just, just food for thought. But my vote against this right now would be no, just overall. So, as Councilman Perez said, probably, you know, it, it may pass, I don't know, but should give, you know, I should help you with, in giving you some guidance and whatnot, so.
I mean, I guess the other side of that is that the top complaint from citizens is traffic. And just because we have a longer school zone, like they were saying, that you, you're likely to get more speeders. So, I understand both sides of it. I'm completely comfortable with staff's recommendation, specifically since they've conferred with both school districts. And, you know, if we want to reach out mid-year and, and update with them, either formally or informally, I think that'd be a good idea. But as of right now, I don't have an issue with it.
I kind of like these longer school zones because it, if it aired, if we aired and making that part of our plan, we aired on the right side. And that is that caution people for, a lot of people, when they get in a school zone, if it's too tight to the school entrance, they don't, they don't slow down until they get there, and it's just usually hitting the brakes. And they ought to start being heads-up with a longer, laying the red line on the map here, I think. What that does, it's, it's sort of a heads-up, you're getting to an area with a bunch of kids or just, and I think, I, I don't have a problem. I think you ought to have longer lanes, personally, myself. I think our, our drivers are not as cautious and as attentive as they should be sometimes. And that, so we err on a longer stretch of lane. That's okay, no problem. It's just up on the map, but it, but it may save a life in the long run, so, I like it. Any other comment or question on this item?
I think as we go through the process, I think you would use the best judgment, the best decision-making process, and with, with a great deal of caution and conjecture. And putting together this list, it's possible that as we go through, we may find something we need to change. And there's nothing wrong with coming back and saying, let's, let's modify this particular stretch of zone to accommodate something we, we really hadn't anticipated and because of some factor that would, doesn't leap out at us at the present. So, I don't see any problem with, I think this is a good start, is what I'm trying to say. And that maybe we need to tweak it a little bit later on, and we've done that before. So, any other question or comment from council?
Here, Dan, we do have a motion and second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Abstain.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kabon?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Ordinance number fourteen ninety-seven dash four was approved with a four to, four to one vote with one abstention, and Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Okay. Let's move to council, let's move to item four in our bitdest agenda. Councilmember Little, would you?
Thank you, mayor.
Consider for our consideration?
Consideration of possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number two thousand M dash one five seven.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second.
Second.
Heard a second on that. Now, ready for staff report?
Thanks, sir. This is the, the second and final for the large planned development, about over three hundred and fifty acres in the extreme southeast part of town. And Jay McBride is going to give a brief presentation about the development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a zone change from a residential estate to a planned development, also known as Massey Oaks. Exhibit one shows the proposed PD, which is generally located east of FM eleven twenty-eight and on the south side of McKeever Road, also known as County Road one hundred, and at the future intersection of McKeever Road and Harkeev Road. The first reading took place in May. Following that first reading, council's first reading, there were still quite a few deficiencies with the design plan. However, after the first reading, the applicant has submitted new some middles. Those deficiencies included, the document was not an enforceable document for staff, and it's short on amenities. However, now, the new some middles meet the criteria of UDC. Some amenities that were included, included an additional pocket park that was added to the Massey track and an additional concrete trail to the Rogers Trail, track. Other concerns were with the school district. The applicant is working with the, working to have the entire development located in the Alvin ISD. The current property owner has signed a petition requesting the minor, requesting a minor boundary adjustment. However, currently, the PD only requires that one individual lot would be plotted in, in more than one, no more than one school district. Therefore, if council wants to ensure that their boundary adjustment is, is proposed before development occurs, a requirement to the PD would need to be added that all property be located within Alvin ISD, Alvin ISD. Staff recommends approval of the requested change in zoning from RE to PD on approximately three hundred and fifty-six acre, on the approximately three hundred and fifty-six acre track. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Let's open us up here with a little bit of information. Council, have any questions or comments on this? As to Councilman Perez, I think he wanted to start that off.
Yes, mayor. So, where are you exactly on the process of getting the school districts to annex and de-annex you?
All right, I'll let Alan answer that more specifically for you.
Okay. So, I'm, just to recap, obviously, after the first reading, there were different opinions about what school district it ought to be and how it should be split. And so, we undertook to meet with the school districts to try to resolve that. So, we did meet with Dr. Gilchrist from Alvin ISD. He was very clear that his board felt like if they were going to, if they wanted it all to be within Alvin ISD. That was for logistical reasons, for buses and things like that, and school planning. It was also based off of their his, recent history with, in Shadow Creek with the, with the Fort Bend ISD. But just to, and I'll circle back to that in a moment. So, anyway, so based off of that guidance from Dr. Gilchrist, we did go and meet with Dr. Kelly. He was open to different options, including an, an equal value split that would have put it along property lines. Although he was also very open to the, putting it all into Alvin ISD. Since, since that was the preference of Alvin ISD, Dr. Kelly preferred that, said that that was fine. Thought that would be fine with his board as well. board as well. So what clear distinction I wanted to make was that the, the, this is different than the Fort Bend ISD, Alvin ISD situation because of the situation. So what, because of the, the parameters that are on the ground. So this is what, this would be handled under what's called a minor boundary adjustment. So it's a kind of an administrative procedure that two school districts can undertake without public hearings. It's, it's considered minor under the state law. So anyway, so all of that long answer to a short question. That petition, after meeting with both school districts, the developer and the landowner met, and they both agreed that they would agree to put all of the property into Alvin ISD. The landowner has executed that petition. The petition has been submitted to both school districts. So they are in possession of that as of about ten days ago. Because of the summer schedule with the boards, they have not yet met to consider those petitions. However, both superintendents assure us that they, that they believe that the petition will be favorably received.
So my concern is accepting the PD. I think the PD acceptance is probably the last, one of the last steps where you start actually submitting plans, and you're, you're able to start, we're able to start issuing permits. You know, I, a hundred percent, I have a hundred percent confidence with both Dr. Gilchrist and Dr. Kelly that they, what they're telling you is a likelihood, but it's not a certainty. It's not a hundred percent. I, and I'll tell you, I've had a conversation with at least, with a few of the trustees, and I would say that there's concern. And I think it would be better if this was postponed until those votes are actually in place, and we know that the school districts have made the decision before we release the PD, to make sure that all those, all the agreements that we were required to be in place, actually be in place before the PD is approved.
I think, you know, from the developer's perspective and the landowner's perspective, we've done everything that is possible that's been required of us in terms of the, the school transfer. You know, anything beyond this point is beyond our control. You know, that's frankly, beyond zoning, you know. And so, I mean, I understand the concerns, but that's placing the developer and the property owner in a position of having to wait and be responsible for something that's completely out of their control, when essentially, you know, what this boundary adjustment is doing is just putting the property back the way it was twenty years ago when it was moved over to Alvin in the first place.
No, and I don't disagree. And I can, I can understand the frustration with my comment. But if, if it is a provision that we have it all in one zone, all in one school district, we approve the PD, then the school districts don't agree. And you've got two different boards that may not agree with what their superintendents are requesting of them. Where does that leave us? And if there is a necessity for us to go discuss with them, what is it that the boards are concerned with, then we can have those discussions, we can put those provisions in the PD preemptively. If my understanding is right, that, well, let me just say this. I, I think that's, I, since that was a provision, request of y'all, and y'all have agreed to that provision, I think we're getting the cart a little bit ahead of the horse by asking for the PD to be approved before that preemptive provision that was requested before we approve the PD be done. And, and to be fair, I mean, when we did the first reading, I did say, we want to make sure all these other things are done before we approve the second reading. So I would hesitate to say it was a complete surprise that I would be hesitant to approve it on the second reading until the, both of the bodies have agreed to allow, have made an agreement to the school district boundaries. I think, you know, potentially, we could, we could work with you with allowing some concurrency, and allowing some things to progress that would normally wait with, wait for the PD. You could start with, you could start with plats, you could start with engineering plan, design if you chose to. But I think that the PD needs to wait. The PD is the last domino to fall. We need to let the other dominos fall first, in my opinion. One other thing, I know a comment I made, and I don't know if I'm looking at an old copy, but again, the enforceability component of the PD, you know, we still have components of it that refer to preliminary or conceptual. And again, I don't, I don't know if I'm looking at an old version, or if there's some language in the PD that I'm missing.
Those have all been scrubbed. So if you're seeing one, it's one that got missed.
Okay, so the current PD has enforceability. Okay, so as long as, as long as that's fine, I'm okay. Well, I'm a yes for the PD. I think it's going to be a great development. I just think that those two, in my opinion, those two dominos need to fall before we can approve the PD. We need to hold the PD as the last domino.
If I may, if, go a little further in the school districts. When I was up in front of you guys back in, I think, June something, June, whatever it was, all these dates have now blended in, I stood up in front of you and said that I commit to get something in writing an MOA or MOU between the two school districts, so I could be up here representing that. We had it done, we got it done. I will tell you, it was a bit naive of us, of me. I will take that beaten. But I will tell you that I personally and my team, we met with the superintendents. That was the easy part. The toughest part, for maybe all of you, back in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, there was an iconic woman here by the name of Marguerite Massey. And she absolutely fought tooth and nail to get that section in Pearland ISD. And so the toughest discussion I had was with her daughter, that that apple did not fall that far from that tree. And I can tell you, it was a very difficult and challenging conversation because of what her mother, you know, fought for. And once she agreed to do it, I knew it was the right thing to do. And after meeting with the superintendents, it was clearly the right thing to do, is basically roll back, roll it back to pre-nineteen ninety-four, I think it was. And that's why we, when we, when the lawyers, which, thank goodness, they're not here tonight, they met with the school district lawyer, which is the same person. They went through from the full process, because I committed to get you guys something, to after a lot of deliberation, deliberation, it said, let's just do the same thing they did in ninety-four and roll it back in a simple boundary adjustment, I guess, a boundary change. And so, and that's what we did. Coincidentally, we, we were not, we were told not to meet with the board members, out of respect for that. We were also told, this, from the superintendents, that they were, they were directed not to sign the MOA or MOU, and just to get to the petition in the process. So I stand up here today, you have a fully executed petition from us requesting to go all into Alvin, clean that lineup back pre-ninety-four. We believe sitting here today, nothing's in writing, obviously, we believe that we have support for both Alvin and Pearland, and so we see no challenges in doing that. And so, with that, I would, I would, A, I would like to have you guys' support on that particular, on the, on the PD vote tonight, and, and move this thing forward. Sorry, that long, I had to fill in some color there.
Look, I'm supportive of the development, which was, which can be seen by my approval of the first reading. I think that's an example to both the school districts of where I and the rest of council stand, is, was our vote. We voted to approve it. But I don't know where they stand as a, as a body. I know what their staff has told them, and I know what their staff desires. But the staff, unfortunately, the staff's not the decision-maker. And whether you agree with a decision or not, if they don't, if, if they don't agree, if their, if their boards decide to go in a different direction, that kind of leaves us all with an entangled mess, that would better be negotiated prior to the approval of the second reading. I think it's better and cleaner and smarter and less entangled if we wait for those, both of those school districts to approve it before we move to the second reading. I'm not saying we just vote no on this, I'm saying that we just postpone it until those things are done. If there is an issue that's brought up by the school districts that becomes a challenge for you or affects your development, we've got to go through this whole process again of modifying the PD, and it would be a zone change at that point, as opposed to just modifying what we did in the, in the second reading from the first reading. So I just think we're, I want the project to happen. I don't think you're going to have problems with the project happening, but we still have two major dominos that need to fall before this last one falls.
And I just want to say, oddly enough, it's hard saying it, but I agree with Councilman Perez. I, I don't think you want, I mean, we only have six here. You, you may want to...
So here's, I will, I mean, I think Councilman Perez, I think you offered up a condition, I get, or a provision. I get, you guys added one tonight on the, on the timing of things. I don't mind at all that we have this done before the first plot is, is recorded or processed. That, therefore, it'll give the, because it is, I mean, Alan mentioned, it's out of our control of the board members. But I have to tell you, I mean, you guys know, some of you are sick of saying me and my team members. We've been up here a long time, and we've spent a lot of money, which is our deal, and we have some critical things coming up. And even though that, I know it's not in your purview of approval, but it is into the, it is in the capital markets that they got to eliminate, I got to eliminate as much risk as possible. And I can tell you that not having an approval tonight just delays everything, and I'll have to, to deal with that. At least, and maybe if Alan wants to add anything, but...
Yeah, I think maybe just to use different words. So the, right now, the PD has a condition that says no plat will be recorded, or I don't know the exact words, approved, recorded, unless there's a, that'll split two school districts unless there's a boundary adjustment that's, that's being, that has been approved. So I think what, what Mr. Cobb is suggesting is that language could be overwritten, changed, to say that there will be no plat accepted for recordation until all of the property has been transferred into one school district or the other.
I'm, I'm sure we could, but I think we're doing, we're playing with language for the purpose of a vote, which is not going to be enforceable and after the other two votes. So I'm not seeing, I'm seeing a difference without a distinction. I think if, if we just wait for the other two bodies to, allow them to voice their opinion and, and grant their approvals, which we believe is going to happen, then all things will be in place that we want to be in place. We're just not getting the cart out ahead of the horse. We're just, I said, I, as much as I want to encourage this development to happen, I think it was a clear instruction from us that we don't want the second reading to pass until those provisions are done. So we need to, we need to have those provisions met.
And if you put that condition in the PD, then it's effectively not valid until the, those actions take place, because they won't be able to report a plat until those actions have been taken.
I guess that's, if I can get legal's take on this, because what I'm hearing is everybody's, I assume there's, there's a majority that is for this, as long as it's all in Alvin ISD. So can we, can, can legal chime in, is, can we just add some language in the PD vote on it? If they can get into Alvin like they think they can, and they've, they've asserted they can, and then we're done, what, why are we overcomplicating?
That could be done this evening. That restriction could be placed in the PD, as opposed to the language that's currently there. And then if for some reason, the school districts can't resolve that issue, then it would have to come back and, and be resolved through an amendment to the PD.
Which requires two readings, which only further delays them.
Can...
Well, they're here. Do you want to, if you're telling us you believe you can get in an Alvin...
Before they speak, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Because Derek actually wanted to agree with Trent. I, for the first time on this project, want to agree with, and support the developers. I'm sorry, I'm really sitting up here, and I'm very frustrated with this body at this point. We continue to say, states stay out of our business, other governments stay out of our business, let us control the city. Yet we're sitting here, and we've spent the last two agenda items saying, we want to tell the school districts what to do. We want to tell MUDs what to do. If you like the development, approve the development. I will personally vote against it because I don't like the development, but I'm not going to hold a landowner or developer to the whim of another body to get my approval. We are independently elected bodies for a reason. And, and I'm sorry, I personally feel that it's putting pressure on the other two elected bodies at that point. Let them do what they think is best for their body. And let us do what we think is best for ours. But we don't set school district boundaries. The state has not given us that power. That power was given to the school districts. The developer and landowner have done everything they can to meet our request. So now what I'm hearing basically is if these other two elected bodies don't agree, the entire thing goes up in flames. And I just don't think that's fair to anybody.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but if the other two bodies...
But we keep saying, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, well, then let me be more blunt.
Either you agree with it or not.
In the, in the provision, it's already, we've already, as a body, already said, we want it, we want the school district boundaries rectified. It's in the PD, it's got to be rectified. What we're saying is, we're approving so long as it's rectified. I'm saying, why not have it rectified before we approve? We're the last body. It's the same as getting a tech stop permit for, for, for a development. We require another body to act before we approve. We require a body to make a decision before we approve.
An elected body?
Well, tech stops run by the state.
But it's not an elected body.
Sure it is. They're run by the state. So we're, I'm not...
They're appointed.
My, my point is this, is if, if the school district decides to go a different direction, we're holding the bag with rectifying it in the PD. I want the, I want that rectified before we approve the PD. I have absolutely...
Then pull it out of the PD that it has to be in one district. They've done what you've asked them to. They've gone to the school districts, they've gotten, they've put in the petitions out.
The body, as, us as a body did not give them that direction.
You can.
We can, but we're not. Us as a body have decided to give them other direction. The direction we gave them, the direction I gave them, was allow that, allow those provisions to be in place before you come to the second reading.
I, I think, put, put simpler, I mean, essentially what Councilmember Perez, I'm assuming, and myself are saying is, I'm not voting for it unless it's one school district. I don't care how, if God himself comes down and changes it to one school district, or if a body changes it. I'm not saying anything about a body. Councilman Carbone asked if we could add that into the PD where a vote would happen. I couldn't care less if it's added to the PD. I'm going to vote against it if the body is not, if it's not one school district, period. So, so that's, that's part of the PD that, that I've expressed to them. They know that that's my position.
I understand. I just view that as dictating powers we don't have.
I, I don't believe that it needs to be a one school district, either all PISD or all, all Alvin ISD. I just want both of those bodies to agree before we allow the final. I don't want to tell them what to do.
I'm real confused.
I want them to have decided before we make the final provision to allow the development to move forward.
I'm more confused than I was when I started, but that's fine.
So I just have, I have a question for applicant.
Don't care. Why does it matter?
If this does not change to all one school district, what does Pearland ISD district look like within this, within this plat?
It would be the same as it is currently.
I mean, we've shown, we've had a couple, a lot of iterations.
It's the rectangular box, right?
The box with a box.
Yeah, today is a, a box in a box, or a horseshoe around a box. A couple of iterations is the, it would be the northern half of Massey Ranch, being in Pearland, the southern half of Massey, and all the Rogers into Alvin. Which, we did that based on valuation, making it equal on valuation. I, you know, as I stated earlier, I didn't think, I, you know, I would get a, a support from, from the Massey family, but we did. But, and I'm, and forgive me, I don't know which councilman said it, but based on what the city attorney said, I am very confident, I'm not going to go a hundred percent, but I will go ninety-nine, nine point nine percent confident, that it will end up all in Alvin School District. Unfortunately, I, I gotta, I mean, we met with the superintendents, the lawyers are going with us, school district lawyers, they've all agreed. It, it hasn't gone to the board for votes. And I, we couldn't meet with the board. We were asked by the superintendents not to meet with them. We respected that. So I can't give you a temperature on those, on those, on those, or board members. But I am willing, sitting here today, to have a, a draft, or a, whatever, a revised school board condition as it sits today, revise it. I'm willing to take the risk because I am ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's going to end up in Alvin. And I hope I can garner your support on that. But it's, it is a risk. You're absolutely risked. If it, if they get in a match, and, you know, I was about ready to cuss, I'm sorry. If they get in a, you know, a match, and they can't get along... If they get in a, you know, a match and they can't get along, and, you know, I know if they focus on what's right for the kids, the right decision will come out. And if it's half and half, if it's all Alvin or whatever, I'm fine with that. But it's that, those boards have to speak for the kids. So right now, they want an Alvin. So I would hope with the revised condition that the city attorney and our consultants can get on tonight, then I'd like your support.
So I have one question for Mr. Coker. So here in, in the packet, it, it states, "City council discussed and staff requested that the applicant will not plat any lot that is located in two school districts. Applicant added language to state no lot would be platted in more than one school district unless a boundary allocation agreement was approved by each school district." So, right now, without this being settled with the school districts, they can't plat anything, correct?
They could. The, the limitation, if this were approved in its current form, the, the limitation would be that no single lot is going to be divided by, into two different school districts.
I can think of a number of ways I could get around that provision.
And that's, that was the point I was saying, that we would offer an amendment to that language, remove that language, and replace it with language that says that no lot will be platted until it's all within one school district or the other, or if you want to say all within Alvin ISD.
Right, so that... And I would be fine with that.
Yeah, so I mean, that solves all the concerns that I've heard tonight.
Yep.
I would think so.
Let me just ask, what is the, what is, if you can't plat a lot until after the districts have met, means you can't move forward on anything until after the districts have met.
There's a lot of off-site work that's gonna have to happen long before any plats happen.
Yeah, and I understand, and I'm not saying that we can't, we would, we would limit that, but if the decision, the decision is not finalized for this development until the school districts have both met.
Yeah, but why would they, how many millions are you doing in off-site infrastructure?
19.8.
Why would you spend a dime with us bickering up here and we can't get you a yes vote? You're saying go out and do the improvements, trust us?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, that, why would they spend a dime if the school districts don't agree?
It's his money. He's willing to gamble on it. I mean, that's what he's said. Right?
I, I just think that we've, we've, as a body, have asked them, we've given them instruction to work something out and have it to its completion. It's a, it's an issue of a month, probably, maybe two. The development will still happen, the market won't fall apart in two months to where these houses aren't viable.
Just to clarify, they estimated sometime in October, so, the school district was, to get this process. Let me make sure it's clear. I'm willing to accept a rewritten condition that I will not plat any lot on this, this P D until such time we get the school districts on board, so...
Okay, so I make a motion that we...
David has to make it.
He's gonna make it.
Doesn't have to make the motion.
He doesn't have to.
But I, I'll just say right now, we can go ahead and vote. I will vote for this because I don't think the reason it's being held up right now is a correct or valid reason. I have issues with it, but holding somebody hostage for another body, I, I just can't go with, and if my numbers are correct, we're good.
So, if, if you're willing to put the provision in there, because the vote, the vote's, it looks like it's gonna happen if Keith Ordno is gonna change the vote.
Just do it without the provision.
Let's, put the provision in there. I don't, I don't want the provision to say that you have to have the, the bodies vote a certain way.
I would just need to know what the amendment is.
Because then you have to change the P D. I just want them to have agreed and made a decision, whether it's all one district or split district. I don't want to put the provision that's so limiting that you can't advance.
I understand your point, but I think that there are other members of the council who don't share that same opinion, and so if we had the language to that effect, I don't think we would get full support in that regard.
That it's all one district?
There's enough opinion, from what I've heard, that it all, that it needs to be all one or the other.
I've only heard one person say it needs to be all one or the other. That's not my opinion. My opinion is that there is, my opinion is that it has just be resolved. I think that if we, or if we're inflexible, if we add the provision and we're inflexible and the school districts don't agree, then we're all back here having another argument.
I call for a question. Just to clarify, calling for a question, of course, would, would be to vote on the motion currently as presented. So I think what we want to clarify is that the council would like to amend the motion that's currently on the table.
I would like to amend it to have, to have the language in the P D that the school districts agree to a boundary, whatever that boundary may be, before the plat, before plats are approved.
Got a second on the floor?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor.
Yes, it will require four votes to pass, Tim.
Okay. Is there any discussion now on the motion on the floor?
It's the amendment, yeah.
It's the amendment, so...
Amendment, not the amendment on, not the...
Yeah, Tony's a second.
A motion for the amendment to, any further question on that? Eric Dunn? Secretary, we do have a motion, second for an amendment.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Amendment passed four to two, with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Okay, we now have amended motion on the table. Any further comment on that motion? We do have amended motion for your discussion.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
And I can vote no now.
Now I'm confused.
I stated very clearly how my vote is gonna go.
It's fine, it's fine.
Resolution, ordinance number 22,000 M dash 157 was approved four to two on the second and final reading with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask the ordinance, is there any Monday night television any better than a Monday night... Moving in our agenda to item number five, Councilmember Perez, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second final reading ordinance number CUP 17 dash 00009, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is the second reading for a packaged liquor store. It's an existing strip center. Conditional use for consideration.
Council having any questions or comments or thoughts on this particular item?
I think we beat it up enough.
Eric Dunn, we do have motion, second on the floor. We do have motion, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Second final reading of CUP 0009 was approved six to zero with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
I can vote for one.
Moving into item number six, Councilmember Carbone, right to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2017 dash 143, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. We have a existing building on Old Alvin Road as part of our field services operation, part of our capital improvement program to improve the facilities for our frontline staff that's working from water and sewer. Public Works Operations is to renovate that building, bring it more up to modern standards and needs. Went through a competitive proposals and recommended a contract here for C.A. Walker, just over a million and a half dollars.
Okay, is the council having a question or comment on this item? Eric Dunn, we do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Resolution 2017 dash 143 was approved six to zero with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Moving to new business item seven, Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2017 dash 139, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
One of the mid-year supplemental budget items that we sought approval for and received was for expanding further our take-home police fleet. This will allow us to get pretty close to having full implementation for those, that program, for the officers that are living within the city limits and the ETJ to have a take-home vehicle, meeting the other requirements.
Council having a question or comment on this item?
I do, Mayor. Looks like these, these are Fords and they come out to over $43,000 a piece. Just wanted to confirm that they're fully equipped with all the police gear when we get them. $43,000 for a Ford, there'd be a Lincoln Town Car. Anybody know what we're getting?
Yeah, we're coming up. We're buying them turnkey now, but Chief can explain that.
Yes, sir, that's for the vehicle turnkey. That does not include the camera systems or the radio, but that is everything else. That's the vehicle striped, light bar, cages, siren systems, everything else that goes on the cars.
And once they're acquired, we can take them off and put them on other cars, some of that, most of that equipment that's inside there, so...
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comment or question? Eric Dunn, we do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution 2017 dash 139 was approved six to zero with Councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Okay, moving to item number eight, I'll ask our city manager for staff report.
Sure, we've been engaged over the last several months with a citywide employee classification compensation, total compensation study, and Michelle Graham, HR Director, is going to introduce the item and, and then have the consultant come up, and then she'll close with some additional comments and information.
Tippy toes you put in it.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Bring it down a little bit.
Mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
There it goes.
Muscle it.
Mayor and council, as Mr. Pearson indicated, we have been working with a company called Management Advisory Group. We engaged them and have been working with them since September, and they've been doing a complete compensation and classification study. Typically, it's recommended that you perform one of these minimumly every three to five years. There have been portions of this type of study that have been done, portions done in 2010 and then another portion done in 2013. The last comprehensive study was done in 2006, and that was done internally by staff. You want to make sure that you have a compensation and classification system for a variety of reasons. You want to make sure that you're paid internally equitably, you want to compare to the market, you want to be able to retain, you want to be able to attract and retain quality employees, and then there's a connection between employee satisfaction and, and compensation. In addition to that, there are a variety of regulations, Fair Labor Standards Act and ADA and the Department of Labor and things like that, that want to make sure that you have a system that bases your qualifications for your job on duties and specifications of the job. So I'm gonna turn it over to David Lookingbill. He is with Management Advisory Group to give you some information on the process, and then I'll come back and give you some information on some scenarios that we're looking at, and then give you the opportunity to ask any questions at the end if you'd like to do so. And with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is David Lookingbill with Management Advisory Group, and what I want to do this evening is give you kind of a brief overview of what we've been up to with your city staff and your employees, and kind of give you an overall summary of what we've discovered, and just kind of the 40,000-foot view of recommendations. Okay, as, as Michelle indicated, this was a comprehensive, top-to-bottom classification and compensation study covering both civil service and non-civil service positions. We wanted to ensure that positions performing similar work with essentially the same level scope and responsibility of duties and responsibilities are classified similarly and together and are paid similarly. We, as part of this, we conduct a salary survey with relevant peer and competitor organizations. We identified those, and then we worked with staff here to make sure that we had, in fact, covered all the peers and competitors that were appropriate for salary survey work. We collected benefit surveys, benefit survey information, again, on basic levels of benefits in those areas that are typically available in public sector employment situations. Based on input from your employees and their supervisors, we developed an internally equitable and externally competitive classification and compensation structure, and we also provided some policy change recommendations to carry this forward. The scope was approximately 770 employees in 230 different job titles. We captured employee data through an online questionnaire process, employees and their supervisors online to fill out questionnaires and identify and verify what their duties and responsibilities were. We identified jobs for, the survey process where recruitment, retention, and internal relationships are concerns. We did that through one-on-one interviews with top management because your department directors are the people who are charged on a day-to-day basis with carrying out the business of the city, so we need their input where they are experiencing issues. We reviewed, analyzed, and evaluated the information from the online questionnaires, the job analysis questionnaires. As I indicated earlier, we gathered and analyzed the salary data from the peer and competitor organizations, and the same with the benefit information. We evaluated the current compensation structure and the classification structure. Based on that and the material that we had gathered, we developed a revised classification structure and compensation plans. And I say plural because we actually came up with two. We came up with one set of structures for the civil service jobs and another for the non-civil service. And we recommended changes based on what we found. This is just kind of a little graphic that shows the overall process. The internal equity part is the questionnaires, the job analysis, the interviews with department heads. External competitiveness is the market survey and the salary survey part. We pull those parts together to come up with a comprehensive pay plan that integrates both classification and compensation. Once we've done that, we can now get down into the nitty-gritty, review our initial recommendations with department heads to verify that we haven't misunderstood or completely missed some information that's crucial to the process. And the final step, of course, is to figure out what this costs and how to make it affordable for your organization. And that's always, lately at least, it's always a big challenge. What we, what we pride ourselves on as a consulting organization is putting together... What we pride ourselves on as a consulting organization is putting together a structure that reflects how you are organized. With our proprietary software, we're then able to work with that structure to make its implementation affordable. And we have a number of options and we've explored many options up to this point and we may still explore others depending on how you look at budget and funding in the future. Part of the survey is, as I indicated earlier, we identified peer and competitor organizations for the surveys. Let me just do a little clarification. The two groups are somewhat different. Your peer organizations would be organizations that are relatively comparable in scope and complexity of operations. Okay, so they may or may not be very close geographically. Competitive organizations would be those typically in a reasonably close geographical area where you are on a day-to-day basis competing for members of your workforce. As a, for instance, you have a police chief. Houston has a police chief. Arguably, the same job, when you look at the size and scope of the organizations, not so much. So while Houston may be a competitor organization for blue collar, for office support, for professional and technical staff, it would not be an appropriate peer organization for upper-level management, upper-level professional, where you would broaden your search. Recommendations, we were able to do a little bit of consolidation. To me, this means that overall, there had not been much what we call title creep in the organization, and that is a good thing. We used the information that we gathered from the employees and their immediate supervisors to create a classification structure that reflects the actual work being done in your organization right now. Again, through the survey process, we came up with an externally competitive salary structure. What I would like to talk about here just for a minute is that a lot of times, the market survey, that external competitiveness gets really looked at hard as where you should be, okay? Our point of view is that market information is just one of several pieces of information in putting together an overall plan. The reality is, the market doesn't care how your organization is put together. You, on the other hand, have to live with how your organization is put together every day. So while the market can give us valuable information and can give us some anchor points, it is not the be-all, end-all of deciding what any specific job should be paid within your organization's structure. Okay? Now, recommendations, we recommend that you adopt the unified pay plan for the non-service, non-civil service positions, that you adopt the civil service pay plan for the civil service positions, that you go to an open-range structure for non-civil service positions. We recommend setting the ranges at approximately fifty percent wide because that roughly mirrors what we found the average range width was in your local market. We also recommend that there be five percent between proposed grades because that makes differentiating different levels of work very straightforward. It makes it very transparent to employees. We have worked with some organizations where starting out, they may have several hundred pay grades with no consistency. Some pay grades are ten or fifteen percent wide, some pay grades are eighty or ninety percent wide, some pay grades are literally only a few dollars from one pay grade to the next, some could be as much as fifteen or twenty percent difference from one to the other. So as employees and your own staff look at this and they say, okay, I'm in a pay grade X and the job I want to promote to is in a pay grade Y, which is three grades higher, what does that really mean? Hard to say if there's no consistency to your structure. Here, you can look and say, oh, there's three pay grades difference? Great, that's fifteen percent. Four pay grades, that's twenty percent. Everybody knows the relationships and how the pieces are fit together. We also, because of the civil service positions being always a little different than non-service, civil service, we recommend that the structure that we have proposed and that you adopt basically reflects the current structure but adjusted to meet market information, again, to keep you competitive with the outside world. Recommendations on compensation policies, we've provided some information, policies regarding reclassification, promotion, transfer, demotion, temporary assignment, hiring, people who have reached the top of their pay grade, et cetera. It is our opinion that these recommendations represent best practices currently in the field of human resources. Now, again, what we have given in our recommendations are not specifically worded policies. They're ideas that need to be refined to exactly reflect the needs of your organization and the language that's typical in your organization. And we will continue to work with HR to refine those, to get them where they need to be. Transition plan, next steps include the following. Determine an appropriate, affordable strategy. Again, as I said, we have worked with HR and finance and the rest of your top management to provide a number of options. It will, of course, ultimately be up to you to decide which one is affordable. We recommend that you review, adjust, and adopt the policies so that going forward, you'll be able to consistently maintain the structure and that on the date that is determined based on affordability, you put this all in place. Implementation approaches. At this point, there has not been a specific date developed. Again, we're still working with HR, finance, and the rest of your top management to identify a specific date. As that date is determined, implement the new structures and implement not only bringing employees to the minimum of the new pay grade, but what we call decompressing them through the range in your organization, as has been very common the last few years because there hasn't been much funding for employees moving within their ranges. Many employees are all bunched up typically at the bottom of the range, which wouldn't be so bad except that after four or five years, you're at the bottom of the range, a new employee gets hired tomorrow, and guess what? They're at the bottom of the range with you. For some reason, employees don't seem to see the humor in that. And then the decompression adjustments are based on length of service or longevity, as you probably know it, in terms of their current position. And I know that longevity is not necessarily a very popular way to do things. What this is, is a one-time leveling of the field. The reality in the public sector is that even organizations that say they have performance evaluation, it winds up ninety-nine percent of the time being longevity or being fired. At least this gets people on basically a level playing field. Beyond that, whatever policies and procedures you have for moving people through the range is your call.
When we began looking at the financial impact of the results that we received, we began to look at a variety of scenarios, the ninety-two point five percent of market, ninety-five percent of market, ninety-seven point five percent of market, a hundred percent of market, trying to figure out what the organization could afford and the timeline in which it could afford it. We looked at implementation scenarios starting in August or October or, as you'll see towards the end, the, one of the final scenarios that is currently being looked at. The ninety-two point five percent scenario and the ninety-five percent scenario were included in the package to show that we had done some work looking at these different scenarios. They, that's why they say old at the top of them. This is, there are a lot of moving pieces to compensation and classification, much more than I think I could have ever imagined before starting this process. It's a moving target and it changes, I would say, daily, but I think sometimes it changes from eight in the morning until five in the afternoon. So these were just shown as, yes, we looked at these options, the ninety-two point five percent of market and the ninety-five percent of market. Those scenarios very quickly became unappealing because both of these plans, if adopted, they had no impact at all in the police department. Adopting a civil service pay plan at ninety-two percent of market or ninety-five percent of market actually took the steps down, which was the opposite direction that we wanted to go. So these scenarios became unappealing at that point. And we also wanted to make sure, not only because, we wanted to make sure that employees are equally valued and we didn't want to have a civil service pay plan at one percent of the market and another pay plan at the other percent of the market. So we eliminated, really continuing to work a whole lot with the ninety-two point five and the ninety-five percent of market. We did receive some financial information from MAG throughout this. However, it indicated some base salary information and we needed to have a bit more comprehensive look at what was all included. So our budget office, thanks to John McCarter and Shamira, have done an extreme amount of work in this process and unexpected work. And so because of them, we've got some additional scenarios to show that not only include, not only include the impact of the base salary changes, but also the others, other benefits that are associated to salaries that relate to salaries, such as workers' comp, things like, there are some other salary, there are other benefits that we provide that are based on the salaries. So that, that's inclusive of these, in these numbers. And it's also divided out by funds as opposed to just being the impact in one lump sum. It's divided out, you can see the impact as it hits the different files that are involved in the organization, which the Management Advisory Group would have, had no idea what that structure looked like, so. You can see the ninety-two point five, at one point, we were looking at a one percent COLA. Then there was a two, there was, there's a variety of things that have happened here, so. Kind of where we are sitting now, we have more leaned towards the ninety-seven five scenario and the one hundred scenario as our primary focus, with the ninety-seven five being what looks like is feasible. But this all depends and will be presented as part of the budget package to be implemented, proportions to be implemented October one. So since we are primarily looking at the ninety-seven point five, I'll give you the information related to that, okay? So if you'll look, looking at this slide, the first column is what our current pay plan, financial obligation is based on the fund. If you did a, the two percent COLA effective ten-one, that gives you the second column. That's the payroll responsibility at that point. And then if you did the ninety-seven five percent of market of the pay plan, that column there gives you what your financial impact would be on the payroll. So what the second two, or the, the second to last two columns indicate if we did the first six months, adopting the current pay plan as it exists right now with a two percent COLA from October through March, and then adopting a pay plan of, based on the salary study that was done, at ninety-seven point five percent of market from April to September, that's what the financial impact would be for payroll there, giving you a total of what your annual payroll responsibility or liability would be for FY eighteen. So, and then at the bottom, you can see what amount is associated with the current plan plus the two percent COLA, and then what amount is associated to the ninety-seven five of the market. But again, this is a thirty thousand foot view, not a formal recommendation or specific numbers at this point. Wanted to give you an idea of where we are and so that this will be a little more familiar to you when we do come back with any budget recommendations that is contingent on the budget that is adopted. This is the other scenario at a hundred percent. The information columns are the same, the numbers are just different based on the effect of the compensation and classification study. Okay, so some other compensation-related considerations. A couple of things that came up through the compensation and classification study. There's a potential for expansion of our certification pay program. There were two different areas that were identified, both our building inspectors and our telecommunications operators. You want, you want classifications to be based on scope and level of responsibilities, not only qualifications. And these two areas had the opportunity to have a single classification with a minimum requirement and then have certification pays that would make the employee more valuable in the position, but doesn't change necessarily the scope or level of responsibility for the job. There are similar certification pays already in place for public works and in fire and in PD, and I believe in animal control. It's just these two areas were identified as others that could be accommodated by certification pay. And I'll use your telecommunications operators as an example. If you have a basic requirement for your telecommunications operators, then your classification includes those basic qualifications. Ideally, function optimally, you would have all of your telecommunications officers at the highest level of certification. The best way to do that is by offering certification pays that then they can self-select to achieve to gain that extra as opposed to having multiple classifications only based on that one qualification. So there is that potential. There was something else that was submitted related to bilingual pay as part of the budget process. That isn't necessarily related to the compensation and classification study, but that was just something that was, that was suggested by some departments as related to, could improve our compensation and classification in rewarding employees for their extra work that they do because of their ability to speak alternative languages and write in some cases. do because of their ability to speak alternative languages and write in some cases. The next steps, tomorrow, we'll be having, the HR staff will be having a training with the consultant to learn about the classification manager software that they spoke of. We would have new plans adopted in accordance with whatever the chosen implementation scenario ends up being, and again, that's contingent on budget and will be presented as part of that overall package. David mentioned some policy and procedure development. We have those drafted. He provided us some information. Staff has been working on transferring those suggested, that suggested information into policy format and, and language that would be fitting in our organization. So, that is, it is in the draft in our, at the department level at this point. New job descriptions are being created. There's a template that was approved. That management advisory group will be creating all new job descriptions based on the work that was done. And then we need to communicate this to employees. There is, tomorrow, there should be an email going out with some basic information about what was discussed tonight, and then directing them to PairNet, which is our intranet, which has some additional information. We want to make sure to point out the compensation piece of what could be potentially for FY ' '18, but we also want to direct them to the medical benefits information that could be, that will be effective and is already adopted for FY '18. Because it's, those are two big pieces of more of a total rewards package. So, we want to make sure that we're providing information to the employees as early as we can and as accurately as we can to help prepare for what FY '18 might bring for, for them and their families. And then, we would need to update the, the new payroll software system that's just on there, because that's, we know that's something that we would have to do. We would do that in conjunction with the implementation of the new classification system. That would end up with title changes and some other things, but that would, that would be, that would be effective when the pay plan, when the new pay plan was adopted, which is based on the 97.5 scenario that we have, is looking like mid-year April of 2018. So, that's kind of where we are at this point, and we would be happy to entertain any questions or take any feedback that you might have.
Good. I appreciate your presentation. We do have a request from a citizen, John DeSpain. Citizen to be heard.
John DeSpain, President of Pearland Police Officer Association, 2555 Cullen. We just use that since I'm up here most of the time. I represent the men and women of Pearland Police Off, or the men and women of Pear, of the Pearland Police Department. Reason why I'm here, first of all, I want to thank Michelle, and I'm sorry I missed your name, but I agree with 97.5% of what they have to say. And, which is good. Michelle and I met a couple of times about this. We got on the same page. As Michelle just told me, we might not agree on everything, but at least we have communication. So, I want to thank Michelle for that. This survey was proposed to City Council last year. It has an apples-to-apples compensation and benefits comparison of like cities and for classification. What this survey confirms is the employees have not been anywhere near a priority with this city. Pay has fallen behind and benefits have not kept up with industry standard, as we continuously hear that industry standard being used. Of comparative cities, and I emphasize comparable cities, not any other entity, at least for civil service employees. If money is going to be the issue, it might be time to set aside some agendas. Might be time to, say, slow down on some projects, time to think about all the employees who have helped and continue to help in making this city what it is. Employees have been force-fed the Pearland Way as equally excellent, but are being treated below average when it comes to pay and benefits, which this survey clearly shows. I bet with great certainty that managers that have been recently hired, have been hired at or above current market rates, yet a majority of the employees are paid at below or well below market rates. Speaking for the police officers, we have never asked to be the highest paid in the state. We never asked to be the highest paid in the area. We just, all we've asked ever was to be competitive. But this study clearly shows that all the employees in every classification are pretty much below market. The PPOA strongly encouraged city leaders to adopt the 100% of market plan and let the employees know that they are an important part of this city. The PPOA also encourages city leaders to adopt a regular schedule to review compensation and benefits. That way, we don't fall back into this trap again. I believe Michelle said it, 2006 was the last time we had a full review, 11 years ago. That's way too long. But, thank you for your time.
Good. You know, I've always thought that compensation and classification was something for big cities, not for smaller cities, but Pearland's not one of the smaller cities. We're, we're the third-largest city by population in the Gulf Coast area right now, Houston, Pasadena, and Pearland. If you look at the state of Texas, we're the 36-largest state by population in the state of Texas, and that's for 1,208 cities across the state. And one of the things, when you start getting to be a big city, which we are, and we're going to get much bigger as we grow, I think that we have to be very careful that we not only have some of the best quality people staffing our various positions, but that we compensate them in a manner in which, which is, that those positions are entitled to. If you get to the point where you're, have to steal people from other places, people you want, you want to have a city where people come here, kind of like our police department, where they want to come and be a member of the, of the department, be a member of the city. And so, I think it's, I think it's a very appropriate time for us to do that. We're, we're sort of on the cusp of, of really taking off as, with, with population, and it's not going to stop. We're going to keep growing, and I think we have to be prepared to make sure that we're going to be the quality city we keep bragging about wanting to be. We've got to do what we're trying to do here, and that is develop a good compensation and classification program and help keep the quality people we have. Those that are not quality will disappear. And we will invite and entice others that are of high quality that we want as part of our staffing to be here. So, I think this is very timely, very, very appropriate at this point. Start with Councilmember Perez. Do you have any comments on this at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Michelle, if I could borrow you for a second. In the compensation study, we're talking about compensation. We're focusing on salary. Were there any other compensation package benefits that we looked at, particularly vacation days, holidays, things of that nature?
They did, as part of this process, they did do a benefits survey and look at some things that were offered. In most cases, we were on par, and we can provide that report to you, but it, it, it does need to be separated out from compensation and classification, because while they do go together, your offering of your benefits is separate than your, your base classification pay. The, the one area that they did suggest that we look at was our, our number of vacation days. It wa, they, our number of days off compared to some other organizations was higher. And then, another difference that I believe to be the case, but we couldn't confirm through this survey, we would have to call those organizations, they have education pay for entire organizations, where our education pay is limited to our police and fire at this point. So, the question was asked, do you have it? The answer was yes, but I know that ours is limited, and then often, in organizations, it's not limited. So, we would have to do some digging to find out about that particular program.
Fair enough. At some point, hopefully in the near future, I'd like to have a, another conversation for us where we're coupling this a little bit with the compensation. We're looking at the benefits and salary holistically and try and hopefully find something that is, at very least, competitive with the region. You know, we can, if, my example would be, I've taken a job chasing money and I got a whole lot of salary, but I was working all the time with very little benefits and very little, it wasn't a good job for me because though the money was good, the, the other benefits weren't there. So, I've, at some point, I'd like to be able to make the decision on both, because I think there's, there can be a discussion. I wouldn't say that this is my belief, that you can have a discussion, well, if we, if we offer less, then can we give more benefits? And, and it would have less of a financial impact to the budget, but we could also maybe provide the staff something that meets their needs. With respect to the certification pay, so you singled out building inspectors, so previously, as the building inspectors were getting certifications, that they got them, you know, they got a plumbing inspector's license and electrical inspector's license, we weren't adding to their compensation for each of the, each of the certifications they got, even though they were more valuable to us. And now, we're, we're looking at, at giving them steps up for each certification they're having, or am I misunderstanding what you were saying?
We currently do not have a policy in place that, that dictates how that is done. We are in the process of trying to, A, put together a written policy on the existing certifications and how, what they equal to and how they're administered. There's been a practice, but there hasn't been a policy. On the building inspector and the communication operators, I believe there has been a practice in some cases, but not consistent with how the practice is related to, say, the public works operator license. Their, theirs is, their practice is done much more regularly, I think, than on the building inspector's side, so.
Are we leaning, are we the point where we can lean towards a direction of how we want to, do we want to even everything out, where there's a base level of certifications that are minimum qualification for the job, but any other certifications that add benefit will compensate both for the, and I'm assuming both for the education? So, if you've got to go to a class to get your electrical, electrical inspection license, we pay for the class and then we give you a slight bump when you get it? Is that kind of what the direction we're moving?
We're, we're in the process of trying to update those policies. One of those would be your tuition reimbursement, talking about your, the education piece, and then the other is the certification piece. Both of those are being drafted and edited right now. It's just a matter of budget implications of, of those two policy suggestions.
I, I think it'll, it'll probably come as no surprise to anybody where I'll, I'll land on this. I mean, I, I think the, the staff is the backbone, or not even the backbone, it's the whole body of this organization. I mean, there's no, no point in me making a decision if we don't have anybody who, who can implement it and enforce it. We have a number of staff members that are incredibly invaluable to us, and I would hate us to communicate anything to them that makes, makes them think that they're not as valued as I know them to be. And I'm staring at a lot of them right now. I, I'm absolutely in favor with going with 100%, giving, giving staff their, essentially what they're due, in my opinion. And I, I kind of agree with what Officer DeSpain said. I know we've, I've had this conversation with you all in the past about, once we update, or once we get this study, that it become kind of a living document, that we update regularly. Couple that with our staffing needs so that we can take a look on, maybe a, maybe it's an annual, biannual, five-year basis, whatever's, whatever doesn't strain your staff too much to kind, kind of have to do this, but keeps it fresh and relevant. Where we're constantly looking at that, so this body can make a decision where we are with our compensation to make sure that we keep up with markets, we're not losing people. We have, we have the, at least a fair belief that we should be competitive in the retention area, as along with the recruitment area. But also, as we're keeping up with their staff, we're also keeping up with the needs of the department. So, yeah, we need to raise everybody up in, let's say, the planning department by 10% to keep them competitive, but we also need two more planners, and we need to have them at that same level, so we can look at, regularly look at where our staff is and what our needs are, not individually by, are we compensating our existing staff, but are we fully staffed, both through compensation and through the amount of manpower? Again, I, I'm fully on board with doing the 100%. I want to thank you and the consultant for everything you've done. I also want to thank all of our staff members who work very hard every day to make sure the city runs correctly. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
I'd just like to clarify something. You presented four different scenarios, 92.5 up to 100. Is that the percentage of where we are with comparable, with peer cities, average market or average compensation? What exactly does that represent?
When we talk about percent of market, we're talking about the market averages. When we get the survey information, we get minimum and maximum for the different job titles. We then average those, and that becomes what we call 100% of the market average. So, in this case, what's being recommended is 97.5%. In the public sector compensation world, plus or minus 5% is considered basically right on. So, 97.5% is not enough below the actual average so that it should give you any problems in attracting. You have to be careful, the 92%, you know, when they talked about that, my concern was that gets your minimums down to a level where you're going to have potentially trouble attack, attracting the quality of applicants that you need. You know, once, once you get them and keep them around for a while, you know, as long as you've got a mechanism to move people through the range, you're not so bad, because typically, it takes a while for people to work their way up. But if you go too far below, you're going to have trouble attracting, and what typically happens then is that the organization says, oh, well, we can't hire anybody at this minimum, so we're going to automatically bring people in 10% above that. Well, that's great. That solves the problem, but it's only a Band-Aid and it's only for that particular job until the next job comes along, and, and pretty soon, your, your structure is all wonky. But, so what we've done here is we've said, okay, if this is where 100% is, 97.5 is 2.5% below that.
Right.
Kind of a long way around, but I hope that answered your question.
You did answer my question, and I'm leaning toward voting yes. If we can't be at least at average, then I think that's a pretty sad situation for our city.
And, and like I said, 97.5 would be within the plus or minus 5. It should not pose any significant issues in recruiting. But again, it's, it's, it's up to you. The way that this study worked out, you were loaded fairly heavily bringing people to minimum. There's not much you can do about that other than lower your relationship to the market. If you all can come up with 100%, I applaud you, because really, that will put you where you need to be. I also understand the harsh reality of most public sector organizations, and it's not always that you can be at 100%.
On, when you speak of average, I'm, I, I come from the school district world, so we talk midpoint. Are we talking about, about the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. A midpoint in the pay grade?
Yeah, we, we, we collect two pieces of information, the minimum and the maximum, and the midpoint is... and the maximum, and the midpoint is mathematically halfway. That is what we use as the building block. We call that the market point.
Right.
I don't want to get too technical because it'll put all these people here asleep, but just as a little piece of information, when we build our structure, again, like I said, that, that midpoint average, we call our market point. That is our key. So when we put together a pay range, we put the minimum X percent below that figure and the maximum Y percent above. Typically, we put a smaller percentage below for the minimum because that gives you as an organization a little bit of an edge over your competition in terms of attracting. By pushing the maximum out, we also give you a little bit of an edge down the road on long-term retention. That was a great question, thank you.
So, so if I look at, if I use the term midpoint, just so we don't get confused with average, and we go to a hundred percent of the midpoint, where does that put us comparatively to midpoints of our sisters? Is that the average or is that?
That would be the average midpoint.
Average midpoint, okay. So we're talking about the average average?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's exactly what we're.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was on the same page. Thank you. I don't have any other questions besides that. I, I would love to do a hundred percent. I, I'm also realistic, I'm seeing the number behind that and I, I know what this body's done at budget time when we, when we get to tax rates and we haven't been willing to support a tax rate that would support that financial burden on the residents. I, I'm all for it. I'll, I'll go above rollback and, and we'll let the voters decide if they, if they want to go to the polls. As I've stated before, I, we're, we're going to have to talk real close when we look at cuts on what we're cutting because we don't want to cut manpower. In fact, I think we need to add manpower. Our next largest is going to be our infrastructure projects and as I've said, I, we're behind on those as it is. And all that's going to do is dig us in a deeper hole as we move forward. So i- if we're willing to look at the tax increase that it takes to get to a hundred percent, I'm a hundred percent behind this. Let's do it, let's put it in front of the voters and, and let's see where it goes. But I'm pretty sure that with the budget we're looking at, that number will put us over that rollback rate.
Yep, that's true. Can I read?
No comments right now, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to say, I, it kind of bothers me that employees think that their pay is indicative to how I feel about them, that I don't value them. That's not true. I value, value each and every employee of the city, police department, they do great work and I thank you for your, your efforts in the city. You do a lot of work, hard work, and you have to deal with us, so thank you for that. I too also would like to look at all of the benefits as a whole. I want holiday pay, I want pay benefits, medical benefits, all of that. Because if I remember the last time when we looked at the medical benefits, we kept it higher than any other city around us. So if we're willing to drop that, yeah, let's drop it. We can bring that down to a lower rate, save some money, maybe put that into higher pay benefits. But I'd like to see all those benefits all together so that we can really look at everything and see what we can do to maximize the entire benefit package along with the pay package. And I would be, I would be willing to do the 97.5 if we can look at some hard numbers, maybe work towards the hundred percent, but like Councilman Ordno said, I mean, reality is, is budget. I mean, where does the money come from? We're far behind on everything, our debt is way high, most of our money goes to paying off debt. And we continue to take on debt, so I don't know where it gives, but it's going to have to give somewhere. I'm fine with sending it to a vote, let the voters vote on it. I'm fine with that. They say that's okay and they've spoken and that's what we're here to do is represent them and I'd stand by it.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle, you made a comment, we can't necessarily look at compensation and benefits together. Can you expound on that?
You can consider them together, but the, the value of the medical benefit to the employee is only useful if they utilize the benefit. If they're not on the medical, if they're not using the medical plan, that's not beneficial to them. If they're not, if they're finished with their education and they're not taking advantage of tuition reimbursement, you can look at the value of what you provide as the organization, but it's only valuable to the employee if it affects them directly, whereas their compensation affects them directly.
Okay. And in the agenda request, it says that, that the survey found that we pay, our cost of benefits are less than our competitors and it says that's an exciting finding. And I guess with that being said, I'm, that's exciting, I guess, from the budgetary standpoint, but that says that we're below average, even more so than pay, but also on benefits with our competitors. So at, at some point, I, I understand your, I understand what you're saying in terms of you can't, you need to separate them out, but I, I've got to think, as Councilman Perez said, you, you look at what you're paid and you look at your benefits. And that's, if, if somebody's going to go somewhere, they're going to, they're going to look at what they're going to get paid and they're going to look at their benefit package. So I, I think at, at some point in the near future, we need to look at that in total. And I was hoping that this study would do that, but I guess I'm, I'm having my doubts in terms of what we're going to see from a benefit standpoint.
It provided us a, a basic level of information related to benefits. It, it's not what I had hoped necessarily out of that area. There will be some additional work that staff will have to do to do those comparisons. We want to look at our package as a total rewards package. Was hoping to get a little bit more on the benefit side, but I think the value of the information that we got on the compensation side made up for that and we have a little bit to start out from for the benefits and we can expand on that. I understand you're, you're wanting to see the information together and I agree, we're just not there at this point.
Can I ask clarifying on that real quick? I, I understood the cost of benefits in my head meant we're a self-funded program where, I, I assumed, and I want to see if I'm right or not, that that meant that we, our employees just used less of the benefits, therefore that self-funding did not cost us as much, not that the benefit to the employee was less than comparable cities. Does, does my question make sense?
And I think you're very possibly right. I have not, off the top of my head, got the answers to the survey questions.
Okay.
But I, I believe you're probably on the right track that because you're self-funded, it means that the actual expense, even though you may be offering superior benefits.
And we have a fairly young workforce overall, so I would expect a self-funded service for us to be a little cheaper than others that might have an older.
And, and the other part of that too is that in this day and age, with typically both spouses working, it's not at all uncommon for one to be in a situation, perhaps in a school district, perhaps in a, in a large.
I don't know, if they're a school district, they'll take the city benefits.
That would be, in my experience, sir, that would be very unusual, but if that's.
I will sign up for them today.
But, but no, that, that's, that's the thing and that could be part of what, and like you said, you have a relatively young workforce.
Yeah.
You know, I remember a hundred years ago, I was bulletproof too.
Right.
Well, I think we've had some good input on this.
Mayor, I've got a.
I interrupted.
Couple other questions. I guess on the slide six, on the, I guess the MAGG presentation, there was some recommendations. And to give any comment, seems like we're missing a lot of meat and potatoes behind this. Where it talks about adopt a unified pay plan, a civil service pay plan. I mean, it goes through the recommendations and I, you know, at some point I'd like to see, okay, what does that look like? What are the details of that? As well as, I guess, I, I was hoping to see some more details behind the survey because right now we've got four slides that throw some percentiles at us. The best I can tell is we're paying, we're currently somewhere about 95, we're a little shy of 95 of market. But, you know, there's no data that, that I can see, I'm sure we have it, it just hadn't been provided. So I'd like to see that and I appreciate Gary Moore's, you know, words, but that doesn't pay everybody's bills here and, I mean, it's going to be, the discussion to whether we go 97.5 to 100, I think has to be done inside the budget. But from what we're seeing tonight is we've, we've been, we've been at 95%, we've been paying below average and we're saying, we're going to, we're going to get you up closer to average, but still be below average and thanks for playing for the last X many years of being 5% below average. That, that's tough, especially on the retention and, you know, what, you know, put a number to, okay, if we have X many people leave, what's it take to recruit them, get them hired, all those inefficiencies? So I, I think most of us up here would like to go to a hundred percent, but really we've got to see what the budget looks like.
And, and quite honestly, Councilmember Carbone, that's why the level of detail is not here related to the unified pay plan and the civil service pay plan, because the pay plan is established based on the percent of market that you want to be at. So if you, the pay plan looks different at 97.5% than it does at 100%. So we were providing the cost implications of the scenarios. When it's presented with the budget as the, as the recommended scenario, that level of detail would be there for both the unified pay plan and the civil service pay plan.
Okay. And in terms of the details of, the remaining details of the survey, is that something that can be provided to us at some point?
We have a, we have a draft report that usually includes a lot of the financial information that we have provided on our end. We can get you that draft report, it'll be available to the employees tomorrow, we're trying to get the, some typos and things out of it. But as far as the details for the salary survey, I can, we can get you that information as well.
And what information we do have on the benefits, because again, I think that's going to be key.
Get you that as well.
Yeah, I just got to double that. I was hoping, you know, our first budget meeting is August 12th. I don't know how impressed that is for you, but at some point, as early into the budget discussion as we can, hopefully before August 12th, we can have the background information so that we know, you know, compensation wise, what direction we want to do and, you know, obviously have to look at that over the overall budget. But also the benefits, so we can have that discussion as well, the cost implications. But we can adopt that as part of or near part of the budget process so we can look at everything holistically.
Just, just real quick, we, it's, benefits has been brought up several times, Councilmember Moore mentioned it. I mean, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before last, we already voted and approved the benefits, health benefits, I'm sorry, the health benefits. And which, and Councilmember Moore kind of alluded to it, it was at, did we come down to what, 66%, 67%, 68%, which was in, which was an additional, I want to say $1.7 million above 62%, which is average where we're supposed to be. I guess what I'm, what I'm getting to is, had we had all that information today and been able to, to look at that and see where we could have gotten some money from, it probably would have been beneficial to, to help us get to this hundred percent today. You know, that, that number's going to continuously step down over the years. I've argued for it to just go straight to it. Others have said, no, let's, let's, let's kind of water it down slowly. I, you know, I, I can understand both sides, but it's stuff like this that, that makes sense. Hey, people want to take home more pay, which, you know, I don't argue with, I want to be at a hundred percent as well, you know, or above a hundred percent. But at the same time, if the average on medical benefits is, is at, you know, 62% and we're performing way above that, where the city's contributing, again, that additional, I don't know what the number was, but I know it was above a million dollars. You know, we, we have to look at those things, you know, going forward and, and maybe, you know, we can't change that number now, correct, Michelle? I mean, or we can't change our vote, obviously, or we can't change what we've already done because that's already gone to effect.
Or FY18 have been adopted.
Have been adopted, so. Anyways, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was known. I mean, we're, we're talking about one thing at a time and we don't have everything out in front of us of what, what's already done or what was done a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, hopefully we can get there.
But at the same time, we don't have any data to say 62% is average. I mean, I was hoping that out of, out of a total, total rewards, comprehensive, top-to-bottom comp and class study that they would come back and say, hey, your midpoint salary is this and all your peers are at 62%? Then that gives us some concrete evidence. I, I don't think that we're going to get that out of this study.
No, 62% of study was done on that, two years ago, two summers ago, that's when they first came to us. And the guy said, the, the medical benefits guy said that.
Medical benefits guy, if you remember, regurgitated whatever staff told him to say.
At, at the end of the day, we were given a number to, to hit, right? Yeah, and so, so we were given a 62% number to hit. We were, we as a city were, were putting more into our employees' health benefits plan than the average city around. And we were doing that by, I think at the time, we were at 72%, 71% maybe, I'm not sure, but today we still aren't at that 62% mark. I'm not saying.
If that's the right mark.
I mean, if I wore blue underwear today, I mean, come on, if, what, I'm not, I'm not following what you're saying. We have one guy giving us a, his, his, or giving us feedback on his study. We had another person come in and give us feedback on their study back two summers ago. I mean, are, are you saying that the 62% number is not real?
I'm saying that might be compared to a certain cities and then here we're looking at compensation, looking at, at what I feel is like is a better, better set of peer and competitive cities. So it'd be nice to have that same, same information so you can compare apples to apples.
From the same cities.
Correct.
Okay, I, I, and I don't remember which cities he brought up. I, I guess my whole point of bringing up the 62% wasn't to say that, hey, employees, don't, don't forget the fact that we're paying, we're giving more to your medical plan. What I'm saying is, we could have saved that money. We could have saved that, whatever that money was. And, and put it towards salary and more. Councilmember Ordno was talking about increasing taxes. I know for sure that, that that's not going to fly with you specifically and it's not going to fly with a couple of folks on this, on this board, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at places where we could have saved money instead of, you know, just places we could have saved money, basically. And so I'm just going off of the 62% number as given, not based on his study and the cities that he looked at.
And maybe if it comes out and it is 62, then we can certainly look at that as a factor next time.
So, so I also had a question. So a long time, and I'm surprised Officer Despain didn't bring this up, is longevity pay for the Pearland Police Department. Was there, was that part of this study?
The, the amount of longevity pay?
The, the cost of longevity pay, i.e. most cities are paying $8 and I think we're at $4 or $5.
Our, our policy on longevity pay is at $4 per month for employees across the board, all employees.
Okay, so was that part of this study?
We did not inquire what longevity amounts came from different organizations, no.
Can we look at that? Okay. And just to defend myself against Councilman Carbone, I do care about how you pay your bills and I do care if you pay your bills, but if I remember last time we talked about taxes, he was the one talking about us the highest tax increase in Pearland history. So if we're going to get to the hundred percent, I don't know how we're going to do that. I, I would be in favor to do the rollback, send it to the voters, let the voters vote on it.
Well, and I think we've got a lot to discuss in, in budget and we'll get there. I think this is important information for us to, to bring to the budget and I think it's important that we're getting this information so close to the budget. You know, for me, the benefits package, while health benefits is, is a key component to. You know, for me, the benefits package, while health benefits is a key component to that and a significant component, not to trivialize it, you know, I'd like to see what other benefits are there. Some soft costs, cost benefits, like, you know, how many vacation days we're getting to startup employees, when do we bump them up, where do we max at? You know, I know that there has been some flux on that over the last several years. You know, if we can get to a place that is, again, competitive with the other areas, you know. It was hard when the county was here, was working the same department as the city employees and saw the county employees had certain holidays off, and we were working, and everybody assumed that we weren't working, so very little business happened, at least at that, on those days. So is there a benefit? Is there a cost? How do we allocate that cost? What does that mean to the budget? You know, I'm sure that there's models for those things, obviously, because they're standard throughout all industry. I don't know how we equate that to budgetary numbers, but at very least, I'd like to see full benefits packages, days off, holidays, medical benefits, other benefits, you know, discounts to some of our facilities, those things that can encourage staff to want to stay on top of the salary. I'm for trying to make sure that we compensate our guys appropriately and make sure that they know that they're appreciated.
Michelle, you getting any guidance?
I've provided information, and information will come back to you during the budget process.
Okay. Clay?
If I could, I went back to the insurance and confirmed. I mean, I know there's lots of numbers, but we were at 68 percent city subsidy for family. There was ranges of 64 and 62, I believe, that were talked about. The difference, and council, like I said, looked at lots of numbers, but the difference between like 68, I'm sorry, 66, 62 is like $120,000. It wasn't big numbers. That was one of the factors that I think led you all to adopt a more graduated step down, so.
I know we have different numbers we're looking at and different perspectives, but the important thing is we're looking at it, which I think is the best. The bottom line is, we're looking at it, and that's the thing that we should be doing, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. Let's move on from that particular discussion and move into item number seven on our agenda, which is council mayor issues for future council agenda. Anybody have some future council agenda items?
I'd like to see, well, I'd like a topic, input and discussion topic at council and not just a Thursday agenda packet on the speed limits, just the general speed limits throughout the city, why they are the way they are, specifically, you know, there's changes on streets like Magnolia and Broadway that are kind of all of a sudden, and I don't really understand why. And actually, let me rephrase that. Not throughout the city, but around schools, around our schools, and the major thoroughfares around our schools specifically.
Any other questions?
And the general speed limit, not the school's own speed limit, just what the general speed limit is.
Yeah, Mayor, one item. I'd like us to have another discussion item where we talk about the PUD, that process, and maybe, we've had some discussion recently where I think we've had some questions as to why the PD was used as a tool. So maybe we had an open conversation with council members. We could provide better guidance to staff about how we desire the PD, the PD tool to be used.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, I want to express our, on behalf of the city council, my appreciation for all of you being here tonight. We're working on the issue. We haven't resolved it yet, but I think we'll come up with the right decision at that point. Moving into our agenda to the next item, which is executive session, and everyone is welcome to stay for that if you'd like. Section, under section 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding pending litigation associated with Blue Ridge landfill. Section 551.071 for consultation with city attorney regarding matters subject to the attorney-client privilege related to the construction of public facilities. And obviously, obviously, an executive session, council will determine executive session at 10:19. Moving to section, the response from section one and two, there'd be no action taken by the city council at this point, and it being no further benefit for our city council, our executive session, we are adjourned at 10:19, 10:20.